I'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and thank you for attending. Do we have no online attendees? Everyone's had a chance to go through the package and first item up is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any items on that?
Motion.
Go ahead, motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second, I have an item that's at nine twenty-five Andre. He has a twenty minute timeframe inclusive of his budget discussion. With his normal, are we going to be able to get all of that into that twenty minute timeframe? Or will we need to move that budget discussion into the afternoon?
How much do you have to say? Andre, how much you got to say twenty minutes?
What? No, my listen to you quite as usual.
Okay, good enough. We have a motion second for acceptance of the agenda. All in favor? I opposed. Had a chance to go through the prior meeting minutes. Any modifications, changes to that? Take a motion in that regard.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Have a motion by Commissioner Bradley. Is there a second? All in favor? Accounts payable. Accounts payable, we had a modification that came in potentially. And we'll go back to the prior two meetings in regards to latent invoicing coming in from one of the vendors in town. At the last meeting, we requested that we have a verbal or a written explanation of why the latency on those invoices. Have we received anything in that regard?
Yeah, I met with Randy.
Thank you.
I was describing, but anyway, it was okay. But I'd say we go ahead and pay it. I think they, we got them, but I think it's the near future. We need to come up with a plan on situations like this. But I'm okay with going ahead and paying that late bills.
Okay, there's an accounting data entry issue with them. Does anyone have any questions in this regard? Okay, so stated, we have any other items within accounts payable that you have a question on? I'll go to question I have. And just because I don't understand, we're taking a look at reducing the budget. And on page twenty-one for, I think that's the fair board. There's a thirty-three hundred dollar and change invoice for a disco ball installation. What, what is this? Is this an item that we need?
Soon that goes in these windmill barnet, let's probably increase capital. Spending chips.
W R T E one.
I know he had one of those in that plan in that building, assuming this would be.
Install disco ball for events.
Is it in the windmill barn?
He asked me if he could get some things for, because we're trying to get more utilization and hopefully we go ahead and get it. He wants to do more skate events to get more students and kids in there.
Thank you.
It was in the big barn. Oh.
Yeah, I knew the ice arena.
Oh, that's the ice arena. I thought you said it was.
I thought it wasn't my fault then. Did we have the ball or is this just the installation or?
I know.
Okay, any questions from the other commissioners in this regard or any others? Is that within his budget?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Andre.
And so I had a question for, don't get up, don't get up. That you're probably going to look into on next contract. Yeah, I did have a question or two, but it was on Rocky Mount Floral Field Warehouse. Eight thousand dollars. I think some of it's sheriff's office, you know, Billy. Yeah, that's who puts those lights and stuff on. Good answer.
Okay, and if there are no further questions in regards to accounts payable or the outstanding invoices that were turned in late. We have a total of accounts payable this meeting in the amount of one million, two hundred seventy-six thousand, seventy-seven dollars and forty-one cents.
I make motion to pay the accounts payable with the old invoices included, paying two hundred seventy-six thousand dollars.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say second.
Have a sec, second by Commissioner Stevens. I have a motion and second for one, one million, two hundred seventy-six thousand, seventy-seven dollars, forty-one cents. Is there any further discussion in this? All in favor of approving this dollar amount, signify? I opposed. Thank you. Next up, Billy Pape.
Morning. He's on my activity list. Or this, current thick event is in the ground out these roads. We did have to file a little bit yesterday of white flying as horse trek and cow bed. But other than that, we are plowing up some stuff. Just trying to be a bunch of cleaning out over, it's marking over, it's a little hit of the winter. Still blading where we can. Um, you know, just trying to get trying to do a little bit of both, trying to get ready for winter and trying to get as much dirt stuff as we can. If so, any questions?
Question.
Please.
So what's your of going? See how long that dirt work, you got a plan?
Just you know, Mike, Mike was putting together, you know, they got to get, let's get that from the town. Where the road's going to go and where this, all that stuff is and I told him when he lets me know, we'll go do it.
Why I want the board to ask me and I just.
No, I'm just waiting on real.
Yeah, I think Mike's like.
Mike, he's, he's waiting on the town for like, because we got to put a road get up there and stuff like that, raise sewer and walk. I'll check them, but we were going to try to get it done small.
So with that big mound there, is that something you use most of it up there or what, what's the plan for when you move all that? That they're next to the road?
A lot of it will be, it's just kind of got to be spread out because where they're going to build that fort and stuff. I haven't really looked at the plans yet, but I know Mike said we wouldn't have to haul much of it away or use the whole stuff.
Good, thanks.
Yeah, I'll check on that.
No, I mean, I just had it on my ass.
Yeah, no, I'm just waiting.
Yeah, I'll touch base with Mike and have a billion update.
I think not. That's really all I got for the road bridge.
Yeah, I don't have much. All projects are depleted. Titans are in. Obviously, we didn't get to the box toward on South Piney, but that'll be for singing spring. And if, you know, weather really gets us and they got to turn the ditch on, then maybe we can get a change or we're just doing it in the fall, but we'll work around the ditch, sure. And then the only thing I got on the landfill, we'll have the burn permits. You gotta just fill out a couple forms for renewal and then there's just ozone contingency plans where if they have an ozone day, you can't burn or just some other rules, but it's all I got on the landfill front as well.
Yeah, and down there, everything's going good. We did do another or we had, you know, every quarter, we had to do all the testing, water testing. Now we've got through all that. Other than that, Scrubber's running good, Baylor's running good. Everything's
That water testing is from the groundwater you've got, right?
Yeah, yeah, we.
That's pretty high price testing.
Yeah, that's what you see. Yeah, C V M, it's and it's just D Q makes the deal.
Yeah, we got to do twice a year, but we were able to, a couple of years ago, they at least let us do test half as much, see test for certain ones. And it's getting a fall. So we got a little bit of a break, but yeah, that's never.
Then they come in all the time, do like little minor testing. I don't really know what that.
Yeah, I think that's compliance.
Yeah.
A deeper.
The groundwater's like, like sixty feet, so they're probably a hundred feet, maybe.
When we did, when we did them test holes, didn't have water till like ninety, what was it? It just on that far south end.
Yeah.
It was, I mean, that place.
Yeah, I think I would think it's sixty feet below the lowest point of the excavation, so it's way down.
Yeah, well, that's a great place. I mean, that place was like designed for a landfill because it there's no water. And other than that, golf course, we're finished some fencing. Well, we will be just finishing all the boars up on that side of the sea fence. Where Mike just got me some plans, number eight or some drainage issues. So we're going to put in kind of like a, it'd be kind of look, kind of be like a septic system to keep the water down on that, but I had to order some stuff. So we will get some of the dirt work done on it, but we will get all the, everything done this, well, unless the weather stays like this. Other than that, that's about what we're up to.
Let's see, the restaurants open five days a week?
Yes.
Is that excluding weekend or are they open against?
I think they're closed. They're open. I think they're closed Tuesday and Wednesday and then they're open on Wednesday through Sunday.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're open from eleven till nine is eight, eight or nine is. And the pro shops open and we're staying, we, we got all sorts of winter deer in there and we got snowshoes and kid skis, yeah. And we'll, we'll have that all going. And soon as we get snow, like we, like we've done in the past.
I was in there the other day. Doing a lot of good work in there. Looked good.
Yeah, and when we talk later, you'll see the good with pro shops going.
Great.
That's really all I got.
Any questions for Billy? Attendee?
I'm with Green River Outreach for Wilderness Camp Throw up Scap Creek. We started a Friday camp program in town and we were hoping to get the kids out to camp more through the winter to do winter activities. We do a lot of things with conservation and outdoor education, so we were hoping to go up to the ranch and use what we use in the summertime. There's a few times of year where we're not going to be able to get through with the road being the way that it is. And I talked to Billy, I sent him a couple of emails and he said to talk with you guys. And then I found out that it probably wasn't something that could happen this year. So then D whip got ahold of B L M and found out that there's a possibility that they could give us some funding to help with those times when the road needs plowed from the larger drifts that come across up at Scap Creek.
He said my part.
I did.
Yeah, Cheyenne said, does everyone know who Green River Outreach for Wilderness is? Faith-based youth camp started in five oh one C three in Sublet County in twenty-ten. So that summer is our sixteenth summer by our fifth director, executive director. So anyway, we, you know, get kids out in wild places, put them on the river in the saddle, teach them to shoot a rifle and teach them to shoot boat, those kind of things. So it's a good use of Mountain Springs property. Can't make a living on eight hundred sixty acres. Gather horses, so we, our kids. Um, like Cheyenne said, we're working with Billy in order to see if we can get the road plowed and realize that, you know, this was not something that was going to happen this winter. So I went back to Tracy Hoover, who administers the permit and asked them what kind of plowing they do Sublet County in the winter time. Answer was none. I copied Joe Cantrell on that note. Joe's the High Desert Supervisor for all road maintenance, I think, and you Billy? In that area. So anyway, I asked him if he would give us a good reference. And he said he worked with the county frequently, knew Billy well, back and forth. Road issues and stuff like that. And he also mentioned that there that B L M may have funds to enter into an M O U or I A, I forgot what the I A is, but memorandum of understanding with the county in order to get the road plowed by the county during those times when it's, you know, impassable snow. Nicole, when I first moved out there, we all snow machine did the first two years I was there. Nicole Pollard, who feeds the elk, got tired of that, started plowing. She broke down enough times that it was not safe. She didn't consider it safe and her role as elk feeder, so she started paying contractor to plow it out. The worst winter that she had was two years ago. She plowed six times. I think the cost was, and I don't know, that's her business and contractors, about twelve hundred time, twelve hundred bucks to plow from the feed or from county maintenance up to feed ground and back to just to keep it open. And then they plowed the rest of the time. The F three fifty or something like that. And so, um, this is not a takeover of the maintenance of that four mile section of B L M road issue. I see an opportunity here. You know, we're driven by this desire to get kids off their devices and out in snow and out in, you know, on the water in the saddle and stuff like that. So that's the essence of what we're asking y'all to consider. Billy knows Joe quite well. I don't know if you guys do or not. Um, B L M has been very cooperative with Camp Grove in years past. When we first started, there was no mag water on the road. And so when the kids were up practicing archery, we just did a huge amount of dust on it. So we talked to them and Joe, within a week or so, mag that section from where you come on. It's about a lower mile where you come on Mountain Springs Ranch and then you go back on B L M, two cattle guards there. He mag that entire section. It's been good since then. So just trying to help out. So any questions?
No, thank you for that explanation. We'll get together and you can schedule on an upcoming agenda to make a presentation. There's no decision made today. Thank you.
Excuse me, I have one question.
Please.
Thought I'd get away. So does that go into where the swimming pool's at? Is there another swimming pool? I'm on the wrong road.
This is off of three fifty-three, right past the Air Force Seismic Station there.
Oh, okay, 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 got you now. Yeah. All right. No, I, I, I was going further down the country. Yeah, wrong side of the highway. Yeah. Okay, thanks for that.
Thank you. And thank you for the explanation on that. Andre, please. And Billy, thank you. Anything for the?
Billy? Morning.
Good morning.
I'm getting like your, I'm good. Yeah, I have, I don't know.
Just say horse three, that's always.
Yeah, yeah, gang fight. So see Kendall, Kendall Fire Hall, the lights got replaced in there. That's a project that they've been trying to get done for a while. Dan Leskey finally got to it. It's completed. So all the lights been replaced, replaced in the bay. Marbleton Fire, the heat inside the bay, the two feet, the fan was going out. It was making awful noise. We when I wrote this, it was ordered, but we got it and it's installed and it's working now. The heat's good. It's on in there now. Um, J O cameras and monitoring system, they got a grant to install these monitors that monitor like heartbeat and breathing and stuff. So we've been running cables for them and things. We got all the cables done for the cameras that they wanted to have in there. Now we're still working on the monitoring system cables to get put in there. We got to figure what walls we got to drill through and stuff and it's quite the project. And there's a deadline on it because of the grant. So we're working on that still. Daniel Fire Water Issues. I don't know, like some of you might be aware that water's really bad out there at the Daniel Fire Hall. I've had to shock it regularly, probably every six months for a while. And finally, just, I've had enough of that. We're gonna we're going to do an acid treatment on the well. We talked to a guy that lives out there that has the same kind of issues with their water and it worked for him. Plus, we're going to put in a filtration system. And because it's not drinking, they have to drink bottled water out there. I can't even imagine what it would be like showering. They use those showers and the water smells god awful. And so we're gonna, and it's going to be fifty-four hundred dollars. I'm paying half of that out of my budget for Billy's side of the building and then the other half's coming in the firehouse budget. We have a plan for it. We got stuff working, but we're working on it. The part of the reason why we really need to do the acid treatment as well as the filtration is because that water's getting into their fire trucks and causing some issues. There's like, I mean, the hot water tank had that much stuff and be flushed out. Marbleton Sheriff's Office paint, we've been doing some interior paint in that building. The walls were getting in pretty bad condition. We touched up some of the holes and things and dings in the wall. They got the conference rooms done. And he's got one other wall that he didn't like the way it looks, so he's going to paint that one, I think, this weekend. And then we got all the gutters cleaned out. Every year we clean out all the gutters with the leaves and stuff, so they flow for the winter with the heat on. We also did the proactive building, which has never been done, was full. And that's been cleaned out. And we also got up there and tightened up all the screws on the roof. From when we were, they were working on the heater, so they saw the screws, so they took care of that too. It's pretty much all I got.
Great. Thank you for that. Any questions for Andre?
Yeah, let's go back to the water issues. Is that all stemmed from the big holding tanks?
No, no, it's the well.
Just the well?
Yeah, it's the well. The water's just bad out there. I mean, we've talked to people that live out there and they've had the same issues. And matter of fact, the guy that we're going to have do the acid treatment, he does that. He lives out there and that's how he had to fix his as well. He said it helped a lot, but the, the one of the main issues is that the building just doesn't get a lot of utilization. There's a lot of people that go using it. So there's some metals in that water as well, and that doesn't get flushed out unless you're actively using. So part of that plan, actually, I'm glad you brought that up, is the fire department is going to hook up a hose to one of the outside. We don't want to run it in the building because then we'll be filling up the septic tank with just water, you know, we'll end up having freezes in the winter. So they're going to hook up a hose out there and run it out to the field and just run it every once in a while to try and get some of that water working.
Yeah, well, the reason I asked about the holding and excuse me, the holding tank. And I don't know anything about it. All I do know is I've been told that where that water in that big tank is not being utilized, it needs to be, and the terminology is shocked with with a something in the, it's not electricity, it's with a, another something that you put in it that takes care of or helps take care of any of the algae and that kind of stuff buildup in it.
I'll look into that. We weren't terribly concerned about the tanks because they weren't being utilized so very much. So we don't we don't want to add too much water to them because you don't want to get that buildup and like we have in the hot water heater. That was part of the discussion that we had, but I'll look into if there's something we need to do as far as shocking those. I'll talk to my Chris, my plumber that I have, who's very knowledgeable in that stuff. So see if they, something down inside those. But we want to be careful too, because that's the water that goes in the trucks.
Right, no, no, I understand that. But if it's sitting there accumulating algae, that's not good either.
Okay, any questions for Andre? Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Up next on this is to give a quarterly update on the budget for maintenance. And all this is, is so we can take a look at where we're at currently in comparison to a year ago. And then where it stands for the overall budget itself and taking a look at how can we strategize to help the different departments cut costs and meet their budget demands this year and because great concern is we're going to hit more budget reductions come again the next year. And so trying to be proactive in this and it's not bringing department heads forward and saying, why, why, why? It's how are we doing? And is there anything out of the normal that you see? And, and so on this, we're looking at, then in yours, your budget is currently running three hundred thirty, a hundred thousand dollars over, but it's because of two items that for concrete, for the rubber floor and the ice rink and the air conditioners. And they were all part of your budget to begin with.
Yes, I will point out, so I, I keep an eye on the that bottom percentage for the total budget, you know, that's what I try and keep under as, as you know, in relation to where we're at in the year. I'm over right now, which is not normal, except that, you know, I had, I think I had not including the concrete. I had twenty, I have twenty projects on my whiteboard in my office and we only have six of them left to do. So we've completed more in the first quarter than ever before. So that will probably, it's going to come
Catch up.
Yeah, it'll catch up, especially with coming. But all those projects would normally be done. Well, some would be done in the fall and then a lot of them would get done in the spring, but we got most of them done, including the concrete, all of it. It's.
Good job. The next portion for the commissioners, if you do have any interest is a listing of the payables by the different expense category. And this gives a good illustration of where the money is going for maintenance. Cleaning, et cetera. And I suspect that you took a look at that. Is there anything out of the ordinary from your viewpoint, Andre? Good?
Yeah. I'm good.
Good. Any questions?
I have none.
So we've identified why you're over budget at this point in time and you're ahead of schedule on other projects. A good job. Just.
I also want our main line item. Keep my post asylum is our government facilities line item. And we're more than ten percent. And that's my means. Mainly, and that's the one I feel the same. Mostly government buildings.
Right. One of the things upcoming that will impact your department is on vehicle maintenance and tires. We're going to be pushing as much as we can to the county maintenance.
Well, and that being said, I just found out this morning that one of our main fire trucks is having some pretty major issues.
Good.
That's gonna hit my vehicle maintenance line pretty hard, I think.
It's not a good thing.
Are there any online or in-person questions in this regard? Andre, thank you so much. Appreciate it. You too. Up next, Chad Cooper, please.
Mr. Cooper, how are?
Special today.
Thank you.
You guys should have this in packets, but as of right now, our budget is thirty-four percent used and aligns with the thirty-three percent through the current fiscal year. So we're on track. Last month, we had a total of thirty calls, twenty-nine of which were emergency and one was non-emergency. And there's no open fire investigations right now. We've got everything closed out from previous fires. Last month was, was a fire prevention week though, so we focused a tremendous amount of effort in public education, conducted six fire safety presentation in the various schools throughout the county, including Bonderam, Dupontie and Pinedale. We did an open house in Pinedale and then we did a fire safety recruitment event in Marbleton. Our firewise program is going very strong. I'm very pleased with the progress we've made so far. Josie's doing an amazing job of familiarization of reaching out and meeting with various ranches and individual residences. And she's had several meetings with, you know, various agencies and support organizations. And then she attended training to help her implement the programs that we've been putting in place. Our smoke detector program, we only had one installation in October. Our training program is going very, very strong. Conducted Fire Service Instructor One, assisted with our pre-plans, which I'm very proud of. We've established numerous pre-incident plans for high hazard occupancies throughout Sullivan County and we're continuing to work to create those pre-incident plans. Encouraging our firefighters to continue their qualifications and sign up for additional classes. We're inventorying our fire shelters, which we're gonna discuss later, later this morning. And then one thing we did this, this month is we focused on EMS familiarization where we invited the Sullivan County EMS to come to each of our fire trainings and provide their ambulance to our firefighters to familiarize themselves about, you know, where equipment is stored and what type of equipment is on the ambulance. And the intent is to improve our, our interagency cooperation when we're on an emergency, when we're on a car wreck or whatever it is, and firefighters need to provide assistance to the E M Ts. So that was well received by all the battalions. Continuing to implement training in our first due, which is our records management system and training program. And then just providing support for an certification request for our firefighters as they continue advance. Recruit Academy twelve is going strong. Right now we've got nineteen new recruits signed up and we're continuing to onboard additional recruits. Getting ready for starting the recruit academy beginning in first week in January. No fire training facility usage, but that will change after the first of the year. We'll be done using it frequently each month. Other than that, just remember regular cooperative service meetings, trying to maintain relationships with our state and federal partners and local, local agencies. So that'll stand for any questions.
Question from the board?
I would make a comment. So I know there was a little fire out here on Paul Creek the other day. An individual that was involved with it, and I'm just so you know, told me that the response was phenomenal from the folks that were there and they created and what do I want to say it? They kept that under, I think he told me, six acres or something like that. Said, had they not been as professional as they were, that thing could have gotten away and would have been maybe still burning. So just passing that on, probably don't get much of that, but that's what he told me.
Good, good job. Questions online? In person? Thank you so very much for coming. Appreciate your time and efforts.
Have a good day. Yep.
Mike Hen? Scheduled? Great, thank you for that.
Couldn't do a better job. Didn't get a better job replacement.
Please.
I can find it. I'm there with Colorado River. Serve on the advisory boards of the governor's employer. And not a lot to report, I'll be honest. They're still in negotiations. I'm just gonna read what was sent out last week. Seven Colorado River Basin states, together with the Department of Interior and Bureau of Reclamation, recognize the serious and ongoing challenges facing the Colorado River. A long drought and low reservoir conditions have placed extraordinary pressure on this critical water resource that supports forty million people, tribal nations, agriculture and industry. While more work needs to be done, collective progress has been made that warrants continued efforts to define and improve details for a finalized agreement. Through continued cooperation and coordinated action, there is a shared commitment to ensuring the long-term sustainability and resilience of the Colorado River system. So November eleventh, they were under a deadline to come up with a new operating plan, or at least the guidelines for it. They did not meet that deadline. But what this is saying is they've got far enough along that the Bureau of Reclamation has said, continue working. Still got a little time to do that, which is probably February. They'll be under some or strict guidelines. Part of that includes a lot of studying that's going on, a lot of it in Sullivan County. As far as water resources, how much is being used, actually being used on the ground? Where conservation can take place? There's some disagreements on that. Between the Upper Basin and the Lower Basin. So those are the things they're still working on right now and spending some money to do it. Again, it's as I've studied some of this stuff and looked at it, obviously, the problem is not a fight between the Lower Basin and the Upper Basin, but mother nature. And when this was all drafted in the nineteen twenties, they anticipated eighteen, nineteen million acre feet of water to flow, then about twelve or thirteen million the last few years. So those resources are just out there. And trying to figure out how to divvy that up has been challenging at best. I think Mike Hen's, is he on right now? He's got some stuff with financial things, but I'll be honest, none of this has been let out yet because they don't know where we're at. I'll let Mike on and I can answer any questions if you have some.
Great, thank you.
He, he's unmuted.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I was unable to attend in person. We're at our state conference in Gillette, but got a few things. One thing on some pending draft legislation through the Select Water Committee. The Select Water Committee took up a conservation pilot program in the interim to look at ways to conserve water within the Wyoming portion of the Colorado River Basin. And that draft legislation is working its way through Select Water. They have a meeting in January to further refine that before session starts. And that's looking at similar to the system Conservation Pilot Program that the federal government ran for five or five to seven years recent, recently. Looking at ways to conserve water by either full, non-use, partial, non-use. And it does have people that are in favor of it and people that are not in favor of it, but it is working its way through the legislature at this time. And potentially will come out of the Select Water Committee as a committee bill moving forth in the next legislative session. The other thing I've got to report on is we have talked to you guys and others about the money that potentially will be or is available through the Upper Colorado River Commission for the state of Wyoming to implement great or measuring devices and lockable headgates on the main diversions in Wyoming's portion of the Colorado River Basin. In talking to the State Engineers Office at this morning to get the most current information, they have awarded a contract to Wilson Water Group and W S, W C Engineering to start that process of taking applications for from landowners and, and water users to implement this project. In the next couple of months, they're hoping to, to get that application rolled out. They're intense to not hopefully have enough money to not turn anybody away unless it just doesn't fit their, the parameters, but they're looking at a break of fifty C F S permitted use of either, that'll either make you eligible, fifty and under will be five thousand dollars. Fifty and over will be twenty thousand dollars of funding to help purchase and install those devices. So hopefully before the first of the year that comes out, they are in pretty intense negotiations with U C R C or the Epic Colorado River Commission as this federal funding does have a lot of red tape that, that the state of Wyoming is trying to eliminate or, or mitigate. So that way it is when it does get offered out to our land or water users within Wyoming, it's as simple as possible. And so that's what I've got to update. I guess me and Mike, the mics will stand for any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, I've got one. This grant money is gonna be available. I'm assuming they're gonna force everybody into these directly. If you don't take advantage of the grant money, you'll be footing the bill on your own year or two down the road more than likely.
More than likely. So it's been interesting because of I've gone back over some old water rights, like really old ones back in the nineteen hundreds. Right there, it says in those that you are required to put in a flume, a lockable headgate. Back in nineteen hundred and they're not all that way, but some of them are. So I think that's coming down the road for sure. That's a way to, to manage the water when we get to that point.
So there'll be programs, I'm sure most of the ranchers are aware of this, but some way to let everybody know that this grant money is out there.
Yeah, you know, they've talked about it at every meeting they've had. The problem is getting the money released, which Mike's had an update on that. So hopefully that happens sooner than later. It's not gonna be full bore, I don't think, but it'll help for sure.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bradley. What would the, the legal process that'll happen is the water commissioner will issue orders that'll give a timeline. And, and then the, the water users have until that time to comply with the written order. Because state statute, like Mike mentioned, does have that in statute about measuring and, and being able to lock out and set the flow. So obviously that's, we're trying to be preemptive to those orders and, and try to help cost share as much as possible. The Conservation District is sending out in our newsletters and our email blasts that information as it develops. It's unfortunately taken three years since the U C R C awarded that money to Wyoming to have it hit the ground, which is frustrating to everybody involved because we were trying to be way more preemptive than than what's reality is gonna happen. But right now that's the process that would quote unquote, force the, the S E O to utilize that statute.
Well, hopefully it comes about. It seems to me on those tiny cricklins when they came, it was pretty short notice and God, you were fighting high water trying to get them in. So they didn't lock you out that spring. Hopefully there's enough notice that they have favorable time to work on it at the right time.
I think just for an informational deal, we talked about the water and agriculture's eighty-five percent of the use, right? But we're also dealing with industry, the Crown Mines and Green River, which consume some water and have mostly junior water rights. Cities of Cheyenne, Green River, Pinedale are all involved in this. And so there's a lot of moving parts of which agriculture is the largest part. So we're gonna be called upon for the most conservation, obviously. And things are being done in the Lower Basin, you know, we, we cuss and talk about what's not being done down there. There is a lot of conservation being done down there too, when you try to get educated about it, which has taken me a while, but they're, they're working on things too. We don't always agree on what's right and wrong, but I think both sides are really working on trying to make it work.
Thank you, guys. No other questions? Any other questions?
Don't believe everything you read. So you're aware.
So it'd be February at least for the federal government steps back in and says, we're gonna solve.
Yeah, so the federal government negotiations right now. With seven basin states, they've got people in the room, so they can't come to an agreement by February. I'm attending a crew meeting in December, which is the gathering of everybody in the basins. Hopefully there'll be some clarity then, but I thought that six months ago, so who knows?
Online, any further questions? Attendees? Mike, thanks so much. Mike, thank you for joining. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment now.
Please.
About this issue from my perspective. So some years back, I can't tell you just exactly when, but most of you would have driven through Farson and seen the little sandy rivers. They would have had a lot of water in them. Today, when you drive over those, both those, you couldn't float a little inner tube. And so we talked about conservation. And the advent, and I'm using that as an example because it's here close. So then the advent of the sprinklers showed up, pivots, if you would. And that's where, in my opinion, the conservation ended because what's happened in that case, and it will happen in all the flood irrigation parts of the state of Wyoming is they took out, but they didn't put back in. And those two rivers are a prime example. Because in the flood irrigation that we're familiar with here, you take a certain amount of water to begin with and you fill the aquifers. And then later in the year, so to speak, you still have streams running that add to a myriad of wildlife, so to speak, organisms that depend on it. And I'm probably old enough, it's not gonna impact me that much, but if you take away the water that is required to spread out the first time around, where you can then start coming back, you're gonna eventually at some point in time and probably take, I don't know how many years drought like we've been in, not very many. You're gonna start seeing some of these springs dry up. You're gonna see the wetlands dry up, the green spots that we're all accustomed to seeing that weren't there before irrigation systems were put in, at least in our part of the country. Irrigation systems were put in, at least in our part of the country. So even though we have. The federal government going to dictate. Those people don't understand, I don't believe what can happen. If you curtail something like, I'll just use Sublet County as an example. This type of an irrigation system, because over time. It I refer to it as having. The groundwater, the subwater, if you would, as being your savings account. And if you continue to take out of that savings account without replacing it, pretty soon there's no savings account left. So for me at least, this is critical. To see what could happen. Because I can, I I've looked back. In in years past, and I've seen some ditches put in that took wire someplace else. All of a sudden they got green there where it wasn't before. So there needs to be. That common sense approach to this, no understand conservation, but this is a critical part of it also. Is to put in some of what you take out. And without, if we don't do that. Uh, then at some point we won't have to worry about lockable headgates. Because there won't be anything to worry about. You know, you can take and look around our country now. A lot of folks have sold their water rights. And look what's become of that property. And and it's going to lead to, at least in my mind, it it will lead to. Brushy ground where now there isn't. And so I think when this thing goes forward. It's crucial. To have your foot in the door so they can't completely close it, because if we allow that to happen. Sublet County and the surrounding car country. Will not look like the Sahara, but it will become similar to in some respects. So that's my comment.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Vickery. Please, Mike.
This is a conference in Las Vegas to everybody. That was the gist of my own thoughts. Not just what we're doing, grow grass. What we're doing. And all those things that come with it. Meantime, we met with the. Girl rep this fall, we went down to La Barge and toured. They had not actually been up there to see what it looked like, so. They toured Utah and Southern County and Duney County. So they can get eyes on. I think the guy that's interim director right now is doing a good job of looking. Seeing what really is vegan there. Hopefully that helps down the road. And just educating, because what what we do up here is so different from what they do in the world. We have twenty-five hundred headgates in the state of Wyoming on the Green River alone. Lower basin has about ninety. Completely different on what we do. And I think in the last year or so, our people at the state level, Brad and Get Hard. Chris Brown, who's our Attorney General, who's done a super job of educating. I think people are starting to listen and hear just what my dad's saying now is. A lot more than. Anyway, it is getting out there. It's slow, obviously, but.
Thank you. Appreciate your time coming in and explaining to us. Uh, Peter Pollan, please.
Hello. One of Mr. Chairman Commissioners. In my department, uh. Import real quick first and uh. For November, uh, October visitation numbers for the Pine Dale location, fourteen hundred and forty-eight visitors. Um, that's down about. Sixteen percent from last year and eleven percent from twenty twenty-three. Uh, direct referral program, uh, holding strongly at twenty-four point eight percent. Uh, the top referrals um, in October were outdoor rec, museum of the mountain man and restaurants. Uh, all states visited except for the ones listed on the report. And the top three states um, in October were Wyoming, Minnesota and Nebraska, actually this time. Um, countries visited, uh, the visitor center, um. Visitors from these countries from France, Mexico and Canada. No bus stops in October. And um, the tracking category why you hear uh, quarter ninety traveling through the area, Sublet County is destination thirty-three and locals looking for information. Uh, thirty. Um, been keeping the stats uh, since June of this year um, for the report, uh, the twenty twenty-five lodging stats. Um, so um, you have a typo on your report. It says November at the bottom. It should say October. Sorry about that. Um. So those are the occupancy percentages from the average in Pinedale and um, the average daily rate that they charged um, from June to October. Big piney visitor center is closed for the season. Uh, it will reopen on the twenty, uh, May twenty twenty-sixth. Um, construction continues in that building throughout the winter for their display room, um, the offices for the mountain man. Or the, uh, sorry, the Green River Valley Museum. And um, so as they get in a position to uh. Get us back in there, we'll get in there and it looks to be about May. Um, off-season uh, plans for that location um, include roadside signage. Um, I was referred to Haley Rulin from. Um, planning zoning, I believe that's correct. Um, and I reached out to her about getting a sign. Um, as Commissioner Stevens mentioned that there was some land in front of the. Sublet um, fairgrounds um, down there, so um, I'm waiting to hear back from her and. Interior interior additions to that um, visitor center, online presence, marketing, um, and. We will look into, like we talked about before, building that itinerary between I eighty and the junction, uh, Daniel Junction um, as a. Um, go-to for people traveling through the area. Um, I met with the um, Gruner Valley Museum Board and we're working right now on. So for that off for that occasion. And um, I'll have something to present to him and you guys, um, hopefully soon. Just waiting to hear back, working on the terms and that type of thing down there. So um, we're still looking for a tenant for this office, office number two here in Pinedale. Um, we recorded about nine hundred kids at the Pine Dale Visitor Center um, for the Trick or Treat Street. And uh, we also open in Big Piney for it. Um, so about forty-seven kid there for that event. Um. Started winter-related marketing and have begun doing that through several media outlets. Um. So uh, that continues and. Did join uh, the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Collaborative Steering Committee. Um. So I think I'm the only rep that's an employee from Sublet County on that board right now, so um. I'll give you guys updates as I get them through that. Organization. Um, Union Wireless has been installed in the Pinedale location. Um. So we have our wireless and a new phone system in there. Um, I want to thank Lisa Copeland for working with Union and getting that done. Um. Works great and uh, they've got a few more things to finish up and then we'll be totally done with that. Um. I did get the Q three um, numbers report from the Wyoming Office of Tourism. Um. But I just got it this morning, so I haven't had a chance to review it, but it looks like we're going to be above. Kind of the same trend this summer is that revenues are up, tax revenues are up, but visitation will be down a bit, looks like so far. Um, that continues and um. Gets all I had for my report today. Any questions, anything?
I do, please. Uh, Peter, Sublet County has a destination thirty-three, so what would? Somebody of those thirty-three came in, what in Sublet County? Would you point at as being the destination? Were they here for backpacking? Were they here for mountain biking or?
Yeah, all different stuff. Um. We have people, court people who come here for family functions, uh, for events, weddings, um, reunions. Um, outdoor recreation as our number one thing, so majority of that would be coming here to recreate. We did see um. Quite a bit of reduction in our C D T hikers this year mainly because of the fire at Dollar Lake. Closed down the C D T there in August, so. Um, people have started coming back a little bit later on in the year to try to get some hiking in and break the heat, so. That's from.
Okay, thank you for that.
Questions for Peter online? Great, thank you. I'm thinking Jennifer, you might have something, boys?
Um, I've wanted to, hello everyone, good morning. Thank you so much for giving me a moment of your time. And today's my birthday, so.
Oh, happy birthday.
Forty-three years in this crazy world, so here, here, so may I continue to, um. But uh, just wanted to take a moment and formally thank you all, um, Peter. Especially in his board from the visitor center and you all for giving Friends of the Bridger Teton a chance. This year with some supplemental funds to help us continue to bring. Our ambassadors for responsible recreation out into our major recreation areas. So um, you'll see this sort of condensed final report in your packet, um, with the sheet with picture on it. Um. So we had uh, ten Pinedale ambassadors um, this year. Those are the locations they were staffed at. Um, they basically work seven days a week because they live there, um, so they're always attentive to visitors' needs or anyone who has a question, but. We we ask five days a week, of course. Um, they started June first to September first. Uh, total number of hours worked is a little over forty-seven hundred for that crew. Um, we. Uh, spent all the money we asked for, so thank you, um. Which is listed there, uh, and just a little bit of data points. Um, we had over eighty-five hundred uh, visitor contacts made. One of our most. Visited areas in Sublet County is the big sandy recreation area. I know that's probably not a shock to most of you, but. That area alone saw some days of over three hundred visitors in a day. So it is an area that now that we have really concise data and more accurate data into it, we're going to continue to support um. Whatever needs to happen there to keep that resource well and visitors safe that are going into that area that are normally kicking over to get to Circus for Towers. Um, that's also a interesting fecal area question, so we will keep an eye on that to support however we can. Um, the needs of an increase of that issue that's happening there. Um.
Is there, is there anything that's occurring in uh, cleaning that area up?
I think things are on pause, of course.
Sure.
But I think they're discussing what would be the best. Right now it was data. Collection and then it's moving forward with determining. Who's really going to be taking the head of it also, because obviously we're talking about national forest land. But we connect through with the Shoshone uh, National Forest, and so we, it has to be a collaborative effort because they. People that are coming out to backpack in that area of which some days were that three hundred number. They stop at certain spots, right? And so those are by water normally, and that's where we have maybe seen an increase of. Uh, need for support, but the discussions are happening of like, what are the options, right? I mean, it'd be great if we could install. A vault toilet there, but it's too far to pump regularly and composting the amount of people that come through might not work as well. As it would in other areas that are not as arid and highly populated, but the discussions are definitely happening and this is not a problem that's just happening in the Bridger Teton National Forest.
Sure.
As we can all imagine, it's happening everywhere, more population um, in places that are more rural and not wilderness areas. So um, installing infrastructure and wilderness is a problem already.
Correct.
So so it is being talked about, but um, besides that, I I don't have any further intel.
Have we considered closing the area or limiting uh, the number of uh, attendees on a daily, weekly basis? Because basically that's what it's going to take to clean it up.
I have not heard that come across. Um, I think it's probably trickling through somewhere, but that would be a. That would be high public opinion needed on that part, because we would also be not only visitors affected, but locals that. Use that area, right? If we're limiting, I'm I'm from back east, so we've had permits in the Adirondack Park for a long time.
Correct.
And when those were first, just from my own opinion, when those were first installed, it it actually hindered a lot of locals. Regular locals that go there every year on their um, reunions or just live around the area. They were competing with visitors. Getting online and more tech savvy to get a permit before they could, and so. I can't give you any other opinions, but that I've seen. I've seen that process in place and I do believe it's working, but I wouldn't say that that's. What's being talked about.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yes, of course. No, thank you for asking. It is a controversial issue that would take much more than just me to talk about, of course. Um, and then some just of our ambassador successes, just a little over um, overlay of what they do. One of the um. I mean, besides cleaning and stocking the vault toilets, which we know is so important when you have such a high usage um, level, so. We're not getting people leaving garbage there and attracting wildlife or just the overall aesthetics of a place and then also runoff that could happen from those spaces. Um, but they do a lot of in-town um, referrals. Uh, so people come to that area and from all over the country, which is amazing. So we'll have more data on that next year, but um. But uh, this year, some of the things that they were being asked about were restaurants, you know, local shopping, uh, so resupply. Um, hotels and then museums. So people were interested in the history of our area and that was. A really beautiful point because um, our ambassadors are educated. On a little bit of the history of Sublet County, so they can share the beauty of why people should be taking care of it too, even if they're a visitor joining. So um, I just wanted to uh, give that a little bit. One of the largest data points that I will point out is. That um, our ambassadors this year, this summer season put out twenty-three unoccupied fires. So these were fires that were out of fire rings or in stone-made fire rings. That were either still burning or smoldering, and so they were the first call to action to. Um, they have uh, water packs that we get them from Friends of Bridger Teton, and so they go in directly. Someone might come out of a trail and say, hey, four miles in. There's a little bit of smoke over there, so we're we're not the fire department and we value them very much so, and we're not the National Forest, but. Our crew does do something out there, and so we appreciate your support of the program. Um, and I and I and I. Just added the picture to show you they're real people too. They're the people just like you and I, and almost all of our ambassadors this year want to come back for next year.
Very nice.
Yeah, and they love Sublet. They love the Wind River Range, Green River Lakes, Fremont Campgrounds, and um, so we're we're honored to have this program here.
Absolutely. It's a great vacation for them also.
Like fisher fishermen, you know, I mean, just. Watchers to painters, I mean, they really.
Yeah.
Going to continue to bring some of that to the community too, as they desire it, so.
Good, good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Any questions uh, from online? Commissioners? Jennifer, Peter, thank you so much and happy birthday.
You so much. To many more years, right, for all?
Yes. Happy Thanksgiving. And to you. Jan Lee, please.
Chairman, I think we're running a little early. I did have them contact her to let her know we're running early, but. She may not have been.
Okay, then we'll skip her. Um, Andrea Jean, please come. Uh, to the Commissioner's room.
Running early is good.
Great, um, Andrea Jean. With Clayton Malinkovich, we're going to. Um, have a request to move into executive session. Section sixteen dash four dash four oh five eight. Sub nine, otherwise confidential by law. Um, motion move into executive session.
My motion will move into.
Second.
All in person. Please turn off your.
Order. Pick up where we left off with Janice Lee, please.
Morning.
Morning.
I am coming today to talk to you.
I don't.
Um. I think in your package, you got a little overview of our prevention program. I just wanted to make sure that that Kecro, they did a little overview of the impact that prevention's having in our community for the last year. And there's quite a bit of information here, but just a nice little overview to highlight some of the work that's been happening under this grant. In that process, she also has applied for a small grant under the Department of Health that focuses on suicide prevention, and it's for six thousand two hundred dollars. The, this grant is really going to be focused on trying to get tools created and getting systems to work together to identify people that are at higher risk suicide, and then trying to create referrals and things that the systems can work together and to get people referred to care before before they have a, you know, before it gets to a twenty in the situation. She's working with the Prosper team, which is a team with the, he's, can't, is one of the, he's like a suicideologist. He's the mental health, the governor had a mental health prevention team that they put together, and they've given the assistance of this Prosper team to us for, I think we have another year, year and a half of their service to help. So we're trying to take advantage of their expertise. And through this small grant, they're going to help that team try to create solid policies and screenings and, and provide some kind of just identif- in our, you know, cares here and help them us lower our numbers.
Great.
So today, my ask for you guys is to approve this grant for sixty-two hundred dollars. We did review all the steps of the new grant policy that you guys put in place. This is a little after the fact, because we'd already applied for it, but just making sure that we worked with Janice and the treasurer's office and the clerk to kind of make sure that all those things within the grant policy are, are being.
Addressed.
There's really no match with this one. It's just a straight. We built for services on the area and those. But anyway, we did. Are making sure that all those, that policy is met to. Is that pushing?
Any questions from the board? I don't. None.
We never have any questions for you. We need, we need a session before you.
Questions all the time for me. And as you think. I think. Well. Look, you guys need to do a motion to approve.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the healthcare suicide prevention grant. Would you look at.
This could be in blue. Is it blue?
The amount of sixty-two hundred.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Seconds.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Now that shot's gone. People, a lot of them coming in.
We have been, we're, like, we still have, well, through October, you know, our numbers were like, we did two hundred and fifty people the first Thursday, and then it went down to a hundred and fifty, then a hundred on a Thursday. Now we're down in the fifties, so we've just been staying, staying steady busy, but it always kind of slows down.
So, so what?
Flu, but mostly, but.
What kind of numbers you get, COVID shots?
Um. I'll just make that one. I should have read my numbers. Yeah, we've, we've been hundreds, but I can't tell you exactly how much I ordered.
Oh, I'll wait some while. I have some questions for you. So there, at one time, how many different kinds of shots were there from COVID? Remember, different companies that had some had to be stored on or below zero and all that stuff?
Yeah.
So what are they, what are you putting out now?
So we always got our allotment through, when we were getting it from the federal government, we got Moderna was the brand that we got, and it was, it could be stored at freezer, just regular freezer. And so that was what they sent out, seeing smaller set of Pfizer that I meant to be in those cold freezers. And when it first started, Pfizer just came in, like, you had to get a thousand doses at a time, and we weren't going to, you know, we were getting two hundred a week. And then it doubled, you know, that kind of thing. So I've always, people have liked Moderna, so I've always stayed with that. And this year, there's a newer updated Moderna. It's called M next spike. You can see it on the ads on TV. It's a smaller dose and it's really targeted at the COVID protein, the spike protein, and so people are having less side effects, and it's supposed to have higher efficacy. So so far, so good, and I'm pretty happy with people's, you know, because some of those first doses of COVID, people had some had some pretty good reactions to sometimes, so. You know, and then it's just whether it, it's still recommended for, for everybody to get a booster, at least at this point.
So what's the shelf life on that? I mean, there had to be billions of setting around somewhere.
So it is, most of the stuff we're ordering now expires like the end of June or July. So just to let you know, like, we ordered enough vaccines to, because it's a hundred and forty dollars a dose, I order it pretty sparingly so that we make sure we can not waste any. And now we're down to just ordering, you know, ten, twenty doses a week, depending on what are, what we've got scheduled, because we can get it for the next week's earnings.
So is that higher or lower than it was when it was in the big time usually?
West floor. We did thousands of shots.
But I bet the cost is.
Oh, well, originally, the, the federal government gave it for free, and now, yeah, it's always been about thirty, thirty-five, you know. And insurance is paying for it, at least this year.
So are they still recommending giving to babies and stuff like that for a while? Really? Man, that's the part I don't like.
So there's very little uptake at that age, but talking to my Moderna representative, his actual take on that is people that they're finding the long COVID are people that actually were exposed to wild disease first, so it's the little kids that have never been exposed to COVID that are more at risk, more at risk if they get it from having an infection than people now, all of us have had exposure one way or another to vaccine. So for the most part, I'd say the people that are coming are people that are over sixty-five. They probably have lung disease, heart disease, diabetes. They're at higher risk to, to end up in hospital. And their doctor, and I, we encourage all the time to their doctors and see what, you know, see what's best for them. Personal choice, we have it if people want it. If they don't.
That's why babies don't have a choice.
Their parents do.
Yeah, I understand.
And that's their two decisions that we tell them all the time, please talk to your pediatrician. Discuss benefits and, because there's babies and kids that are at home parents that were, you know, the kids have cancer, and then they're, you know, they're really high risk, whatever. So, you know, everybody has different personal choices and things that they have to consider with their devices.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I got a question.
I knew it.
She's been here before.
Surprise. So, and I know there's been a couple of instances here locally, when I say locally in Sublet County, that that COVID vaccine, in fact, has impacted, the latest one that I know of.
If you look at the numbers, you know, the risks for most people are pretty minimal. There are situations that we, we've had a couple on, early on, that we reported into the VAERS, it's the vaccine adverse reaction national system. And, you know, is it causal that there, that that's what caused their health issues or not? But, you know, like Dr. Fitz and I turned that into the system so that someone smarter than us could investigate it and, and have it reported and really looked into. There's a really robust system to report those adverse things, and they made some changes over time with the vaccine, because they, there was a short time, period of time that there were some younger people that were getting an inflammation around their heart, you know, called pericarditis. So they, they actually changed some of the recommendations, you know, so like, that's the best that I can say about that. Like that, that's another one where they have to do that, have an autopsy to figure that out.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? But we try hard if there's anything that happens to someone that's beyond just a sore arm or fever and achy kind of thing to have it reported into the bigger system so it can.
Well, I know if you sit and watch TV and you see all this stuff that's supposed to help you, but then you read the disclaimers on it, you think, huh, I'm not going to take a chance on twelve of them. Might get me to, to take one that might help me. I mean, and I assume that this COVID vaccine might be the same thing. So now, follow-up question. I had it big time, COVID. And so I was told, and I've lived with that explanation, that my immune system now, because I got through that thing, would have been up or built back up to where I'm not at risk for COVID. In your opinion, is that correct?
So that would be something that I, I would tell you to go talk to your doctor, because he knows what you're, if you.
Right, and it's exactly where I got that information from, yeah. Yeah.
But you would be in one of the higher risk groups, because you have severe in immunity, they found immunity three to six months after an active case. You have really high antibodies, but those wane over time. That's where everybody has to work, in my opinion, with their own personal provider to see what, evaluate their risk and kind of just make decisions about what. What's best.
I've just wanted to save you that dose of vaccine for somebody else. I haven't, I haven't been ready to sign up for.
And if you and your, you choose not to get it, fine. Those are all personal choices.
Yeah. Well. And it, during my stage in it, there was people that had it, didn't even know they had it. And yet, for myself, I mean, it really knocked the pins under me. As a matter of fact, I feel pretty fortunate to be sitting here, quite frankly.
Yeah.
And so.
Dr. Fitzsimmons would tell you that, you know, those first variants of coronavirus, they mutate over time, and they, they want to be spread more, but they don't want to kill off their hopes. And when we didn't, as a, as a society, didn't have any antibodies with some of those first variants, I mean, they were taking people out in body bags. I mean, we're fortunate that the, the variants, they still can put people in the hospital, but it's not nearly what it was.
Yeah.
From four years ago.
One, one, oh, one other question. So I had an opportunity a week or so ago, I think it was now to meet, which I didn't know, we had a health inspector here, but we do have one, been employed for a while, apparently. Does he, is he work under you? Who does he work under?
You guys decided a few years ago that, so after there was some turnover in that environmental health position, you guys turned it back to the state?
And, and so that's where it all is now. Is that correct? Yeah. Okay, that, well, I was trying to remember if that's the way it was, and I was certain that's how it was, but thank you for.
So are they around the county, Jason?
So they have a schedule on, you know, like, when they have to, like, restaurants and Ridley's and all those places, pools. They have a set schedule of how they.
And I never asked this guy where he lives. I, I was under the impression he might be living here.
So I don't even know that is right now. I guess I'll call and see. I didn't know if they filled that position.
I'll certainly share.
Little media force and then she.
It's a very lenient thing, though, checking restaurants. Some of them once a year, something crazy.
Too, if they have complaints about restaurants and call us, then we steer them to the state to get that followed up on. All the water stuff is done through, like, the town of Pinedale does water testing, and then there's some send-out tests for water, and then I hate planting and zoning, there's all the septic stuff. And that stuff used to all be under, like, keys. Bringing in.
Right, and then this person is taken.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They do more of the food inspection and like pools and all that things.
Thank you. Any further questions? Online questions? Thank you so much for coming. Great to see you. Clayton Malinkovich, please. Janice, please, you're filling in for Clayton.
All right. As you all know, I've been busy preparing budget analyses, so if anybody wants to see anything different on those or have any recommendations, let me know, and I can try to make those amendments. I also want to let you know that we've sent the closeout notice for our LATCF, Local Assistance and Fragile Possessive Fund that we received during, during, during the COVID years. That closeout is complete, but we're still subject to records retention and inspection and audits. And I've notified both Emily and Jessica that, and that files in my office, should anybody need access to those files. And also the auditor has been notified. I have started on the fifth, ten, any education documents, but we are, we had, of course, the government shut down, and so some of the analysis is dependent upon census information, and I would go to the census website and get in perpetual loop that they weren't available, so that will continue, and I'll provide that to you probably at your next meeting for review. Commissioner White and I went to the AI, NACOS AI forum in Provo. I thought it was very good. I provided you yesterday with some feedback about how that went and some questions about, you know, next steps. Did you want to add anything to what I sent yesterday?
I think you said it, and you said it very well.
So I guess a couple of questions. Do we want to start talking to the general population of employees about AI use and, and expressing that? I think a main, a, a big thing that came out of that is that those prompts that they put in, I mean, results are subject to FOIA, so Freedom of Information Act. So I feel like we at least have our. I feel like we at least have responsibility to make them aware of that because they have. If they're doing it on their own personal accounts or something like that. That could be an issue for them. And then it might be worth us finding out what they are using and. And just being a little more aware, but we're not to the point yet of having a policy. So I guess, how do you want me to proceed with that?
Mr. White?
Let's see, um, do we reach out to NACO and get some general guidelines on. AI use and, uh, and that thing, and then we, we send a memo to the whole. Sublet County stating that as far as asking what they're doing with it. I don't know that. That one kind of gets into a gray area. But I think definitely need to get some general awareness of, you know. Some of the sideboards and some of the stuff that they should be aware of, why we're generating a policy for that.
And then do we want to start the process of working with the existing pilot users as a potential committee for. Generating those policies or just want this board to generate those policies?
I think, I think you have a committee that's already fully engaged in it and.
I think it's well representative of, correct, all the departments.
And then are you guys good with me asking departments to provide us with information about what data they currently have? How it's stored and that kind of information, just so we have. Centralized knowledge of what our data is that's out there that might be useful for agents. I mentioned briefly that we're continuing to work on and stating the agreement with the University of Wyoming. So, as a bit of history. When we stopped giving the. Two thousand dollars per semester scholarship, which by the way, we have two payments left. Those will be happening in December and we'll be done with that. Um, but when we stopped that, we started talking to the University of Wyoming initially and we sent them twenty five thousand dollars to administer. Scholarship awards to students who graduated from Sublet County schools and we have a certain set of criteria. And we opened it up and got in conversations with community or, you know, community colleges and other colleges. And we're able to work out a system with them and. Um, that's been functioning reasonably well. And they notify us on a semester by semester basis of students who qualify and we send them. One thousand dollars for each student per semester that qualifies and it hasn't been. Really widely used, but it is used and it has benefited students and then, you know, that have graduated from Sublet County. But our original agreement with the University of Wyoming didn't match the agreement with those other students. So we're trying to line those up to be, you know, more equal. Because for instance, we had a lower GPA at the other schools. So we started working with them. We signed an agreement, but whatever happened, it didn't get signed on their side, so we got back in touch with them. Anyway, we're at the point now that we're down to approximately three criteria that, um, still need to be worked out. One of which is probably the most imperative and that was that they had in their draft to. To restate the agreement that there was preference demonstrated for financial need. We said it can't be preference, it has to be demonstrated financial need and that was as a result of our county attorney saying we couldn't move more scholarships for. Those who didn't show financial need. Um, their renewal language, they, at, at the other schools, they're renewing on a semester by semester basis. Reanalyzing the student for the criteria every semester and sending it. University of Wyoming said they will only do it on an annual basis. And that's probably okay. I, unless somebody has a real problem with that, I feel like that one. Can be, um, managed fine. But the last one is that we have stated that the award has to be after all other financial aid grants. See, I, I have the exact language somewhere in this mix, but in any case. We essentially were saying we wanted it to be the last dollar into their account so that they weren't getting a refund because anecdotally we've heard. The students have gotten refunds and it's been a problem for this commission. That one they cannot do. They said. That, for instance, there are statutes that say the. Money from the state of Wyoming via the Hathaway would have to be a last dollar in. So that is. Not something that they can in good faith agree with. So I guess my question for you is with them meeting the. Yes, it must be demonstrated financial need in annual base, basis. Are you okay with. Still moving forward with University of Wyoming?
Yeah, I'm okay. Excuse me, I haven't heard anything about tech schools. Do we have anything going on with them?
We do not. I mean, we can pursue it with some bad news from you guys about what you would like, if that's something I want to do.
Well, I, I don't know. I just know there's kids coming out of this community that go to those tech schools and. You know, make careers out of some of what they've learned there. And if they need a little help and qualify. Then I think we ought to look at that. That's, that's my thoughts.
I think wasn't some of the issue with the tech schools was there wasn't a lot of public tech schools out there? And, and it has to be a public entity in order to give tax.
Is one at Lermi, is it, is it private?
I think, uh, LC.
I think it is private.
What is, what is that else? Triple LC?
Yeah, L triple C, yeah. It is private.
We might check on that, for sure.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay, so I will get back with the University of Wyoming and tell them that, that sort of presented and. That you understand that, we'll proceed with that and I'll probably have that agreement for you at tonight's.
Is there a, is there a way to get information on how much refunds they give back?
I left. He said, what I can tell you is he said it happens all the time. And there's no way to know if, so. Clayton talks about the proverbial bucket, you're filling your bucket with all these various sources. And we wanted ours to be the last dollar in so it didn't overflow and. So we only provided what they needed to, for that last bit or up to a thousand dollars per semester. Um. This gentleman said. They're looking at so many various sources that essentially at some point it's going to splash out, but the state has the last dollar. So. And they, so if a refund is issued, we don't know if it's our money or someone else's money. And I explained to him the concern. And he said, I can understand that and I'm physically conservative as well, but I can't guarantee that that's not gonna. Terms of the count, I don't know, but that was the conversation. The NACO registration for the legislative conference is now open. I put the prices. Based on when you sign up in your packet. I just need to know how to proceed. Sam and I are both on committees. Technically, members of the committees are. Expected to attend. That doesn't always happen, but they are expected to attend, so. I wonder if you want Sam and me to go. Does anybody else want to join a NACO committee? We do that through your WCCA. Jeremiah makes the recommendation and, and we can have participants on multiple committees.
Or permission from this board to attend again along with Janice's committees. This is in Washington, right?
What are the dates?
Should have put that on there, I apologize. I want to say it's early in February.
Well, I want to see the dates.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's start with what dates can't you make it?
Yeah.
Late February on, I'm out.
Okay, ledge conference, the actual dates of the conference itself are February twenty first through twenty fourth. To me, having gone one year and only gone for those dates and then the next year. After learning more, I went ahead of time and went with. The state of Wyoming to various agencies in advance of the meeting. That to me was very valuable. That's the most valuable portion. Of it, in my opinion, and then our committee meetings. And then.
I was, I was able to attend the legislative conference to get before Janice and Sam and. I would agree that it's the meetings that are attended before the actual conference that were the most valuable. You were able to network with the other commissioners, you were able to have a presence. Behind Sublet County. So. If you were to attend, I would say definitely start it early and then maybe cut out early.
Generally, I agree with all of that. There were some good classes toward the tail end of the last one, but if. The, you know, if the concern is the duration, I would say that is the way to go.
I'm fine with those two representing us.
I'm good.
Registered and contacted the WCCA to find out what those advanced dates are. Um, next on the agenda, I put a draft letter to the Wyman Grants Management Office in your packet. That is for. Fire shelters. Um, I believe the letter. Told the story, but I think Chad came prepared to show you what those actually are. So. I might ask that Chad be able to come up?
Great.
Did everyone have a chance to review that letter or would you like me to?
I thought it was Christmas packages.
Important again, commissioners, we should give time and consideration. Uh, so as you see the letter, um, what Janice has suggested is that we reach out to the Wyoming Office of Grants Management and request assistance to. Provide additional funding to replace our fire shelters. Um, if you're not familiar with what a fire shelter is, it's, um. It's part of the personal protective equipment that every wildland firefighter, whether you work for Sublet County Unified Fire or you volunteer firefighter. Or you work for the federal government, for BLM, for Forest Service. Everybody has to carry these, the shelters and it's intended to be. Uh, the last resort of safety. Um, in case of, of a catastrophic wildland fire burnover occurs. Um, this is a little tent, think like a little one person pup tent that the firefighter can crawl into and it's got, uh. Um, reflective, illuminated, uh, exterior shell that reflects the radiant heat away. There's still the convective heat, the. Superheated air that comes inside, but, uh, these shelters have been. Used in numerous occasions and have absolutely saved many, many firefighters' lives over the years since they've been implemented in the late eighties. Um, but what happened is, is, uh, we just got notification from the National Wildland Coordinating Group. Um, that specified that we need to immediately take. Our, um, shelters that were built prior to two thousand and six out of service and, uh, the, the. Information they provided says that, um. The older shelters were built to a different standard and the glue laminate that keeps the. The shelter together and attaches to the floor of the shelter were built to a lesser standard. Um, and after two thousand and six, they, they improved that standard and now what they found is, is last year and several other examples. Uh, there's, there's been some shelter deployments from wildland firefighters that didn't, uh, protect the firefighters sufficiently. So now they, they've given guidance saying that we need to take these shelters out of, out of service if they don't have an infinite shelf life. And so they've, they've, um, advised us to immediately take these, these shelters out of service and prevent our firefighters from carrying them. And so, um, the actual shelter that, 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 um, that I've, I've got here. This, this is the shelter, we, we actually attach it to our, our belt and as part of our line gear, uh. The firefighters wear a backpack, basically it weighs about forty five pounds. This is just one component of the backpack and all the other safety equipment they got to wear. Um, but what I'm demonstrating for you here is the difference between a new shelter and a pre-two thousand and six shelter that's been carried for twenty plus years. And you can see the, the black dust on, on the old shelter. That's actually the, the, um, the aluminum breaking down on the shelter itself and demonstrates the, uh. You know, the action that they're, what they're describing here where the delamination occurs and, and provides a lesser degree of safety for the firefighters. So I, I can agree, um, the, the, um, the requirement to take it out, out of services is legitimate. Um, but what I'm up against is we don't have the money in our budget to, uh, pay to replace these, these shelters and they, they cost about seven hundred dollars apiece and. We've, we've basically got eighty five firefighters that we need to plan to replace these for. Uh, we went through and, and, uh, inventoried our existing, uh, uh, inventory of, of shelters. And the vast majority of them were built prior to two thousand and six. And I want to say about seventy five to eighty five percent of them need to be replaced right now. We're, we're still gathering some data on two of our outlined stations, but yeah, the vast majority of our, of our shelters need to be replaced to. Uh, you know, Janice in the letter, it's five or six hundred and thirty dollars to seven hundred dollars per shelter depending on the size of the shelter. So anyhow, so, um, as, as Janice had, had recommended, we're, we're just looking for some grant assistance and appreciate support from the commissioners to, to seek that assistance.
Do you clean those up, reuse them, get deployed?
Oh, uh, that's a great question. Thank you. Uh, no, these are one time only, uh, use shelters and. The, the, the last, like, I've been in the fire service for over thirty years. I've never once had to actually use a shelter. Um, if, if you ever do use it, it's a, it's a life changing event and it, it, if, it's, it's harrowing and. There's definitely been firefighters that deployed a shelter that didn't live through the events. And so it's, uh, it's only meant to be, you know, in, in. The, the most catastrophic, uh, scenario possible that the firefighter would ever actually deploy one of these shelters and, and they're, they're one and done, used shelters.
You have to have them though.
Yeah. There's no, you know, you cannot leave the fire truck. Um, you know, while you're in the fire truck, you obviously don't wear it for the second you step out of the fire truck, you, you train your firefighters, you immediately put these shelters on. And you step away from the fire truck with, uh, with your line gear on your back.
How do those things? Expand, so to speak. I know that's not a good word, but how do you, excuse me, how do you get them set up so you can crawl under them or does it? Do you crawl in them or do you put it over you?
So we, um, so we have a mandated annual training and annual refreshers. So we, we, we train all of our entry level brand new firefighters. As part of our recruited academy to, to do exactly what you're describing. But it's so important, we have, we were mandated by the federal government every single year, we have to. Uh, retrain and refresh our firefighters exactly how to put, put these shelters, how to, how to deploy these shelters. But. The answer to your question is they have, uh, they have a bottom that's kind of opened up. So when I, when I, when I grab a shelter. You, you pull the, the tab off and then there's, there's two handholds in here that are labeled left and right hand and you. You train your firefighters to open them up and they kind of, um, they, they deploy like a, like a, like a little shelter, like a, like a little tent, I guess. It doesn't have a frame inside the tent, but, uh, you kind of shake them out and then you step inside of them. You train your firefighters, there's little, uh, loop toe holes and. Handholds and you, you get inside the shelter and seal the, the bottom of the, the floor to the ground and try to keep as much of the air. Uh, protected inside the shelter as you can to insulate you from the fire and, and from the radiant heat from the fire.
So, so these that are no longer in service, that you can use them for instructions.
We, we have several that, that are currently being used for instruction. We've actually got, um, um, actually the, this is a good example. Um. So this, this, this is called a, a practice fire shelter. Now, I've, I've actually took the, the practice shelter out and replaced it with a real one for your demonstration today. Normally a practice shelter is a green colored shelter. Uh, we use those to, to train our firefighters. They're the exact same shelter, but we can reuse those. Over and over again while we're training our firefighters. The real shelter, the, the aluminum shelter or the aluminum laminated shelter. Um, is, can only be used one time and, and we've, we've got one that we demonstrate to the firefighters. How to understand when they're inspecting it and what's, what's a good quality shelter, which was versus one that needs to be taken out of service, but they're, they're only used one time.
So, but those still could be used as for training.
But, I mean, the, the guidance in the, in the, the memo here specifically calls out, we need to destroy the, the shelter so that they're not, not used inadvertently on a wall and fire.
Well, that's fine for them, but if they can be used for demonstration purposes, I don't know why you couldn't keep some of them around just for that.
Great.
So, Mr. Chairman, at this time, we're asking for authorizing for you to sign that letter to the. Management's office, basically asking.
And that, well, that fire, can it burn over me that way? And I'm still going to be basically okay?
So the, the answer to the will live. So we do absolutely everything we can to, to, to never put ourselves in a situation where that would be necessary.
Great. Thank you for that. Any further questions? Comments? Thank you. Good, good presentation. Thank you.
Last on my list is just a notification that the board of plaintiffs are coming soon because of the holidays. Those are my tentative dates for publishing those four vacancies. Looking for New Years, so I thought I'd do date on the seventeenth. So if anybody has any issue with that, let me know. And then I just want to bring your attention to the dates at the bottom. Some of them are still tentative, but there, there are some. You know, pretty big things coming up. The meeting for the Rock Springs R and P. Um, potential female region eight meeting, although I have, I sent an email and said, did you buy, did you finalize that date and haven't heard anything back, but. Just be aware of those dates and. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
One question, yes. The rigor Teton, is that kind of like the Bridger Teton?
Did I mess up?
Oh, no, I'm just asking. I just had to.
Thank you.
I knew better.
Mr. Malinkovich.
Sure.
Actually, so it's eleven fifty eight. Why don't you guys just do mention the right? How's that grab it?
Well, I don't want, want to have you as the dessert for my lunch, but thank you. No, no, we're good. We'll break for lunch. It's all good. Motion?
June for lunch.
Second. Great, thanks. All in favor, I oppose now. Adjourned back at, uh, one.
Still no water. Get your cups. There's water in the.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Clayton Malinkovich.
Better guy that didn't want to do much today.
Know what?
You read my mind.
Well, get out of here then. We won't worry about you till next week.
Billy, pay please. Okay. We have you for Roden Bridge Golf Course Waste Management Recycling and Transfer Station.
All of them.
Start with Roden Bridge. You both there?
Yeah.
Tell in everyone the same thing. We're looking at ways to work together and come up with, uh, reducing our budget. Uh, controlling expenses and collaborate, trying to come up with ways to do things more efficiently. So. We suspect next year we're going to have additional cuts in our budget based on the economy. And so we're working in, in that direction. And it's not, uh, micromanage or fly spec what you're doing or anyone Billy. It's just, how, how do we do better?
I'm sorry.
Nope. So. What I have is, is this one. Billy, this one. And what this shows is the different categories for the expenses going through and how for the first quarter of fiscal year twenty five, you were at three point two million dollars. In expenditures in the first quarter of, uh, fiscal year twenty six, you're at two million dollars or a delta difference of one point. Two million dollars and that pretty much goes back into the, uh, reduction of the capital asset, um. Heavy equipment. When we go through and take a look at all of your other expenses, you know, you've had minor increases in. In everything miscellaneous projects are down sixty one percent. Your tires are up a hundred and forty six percent. Now I would think for the next. Quarter with us, uh. Pushing department has to, uh, purchase tires through Roden Bridge rather than outside vendors. That's going to. Uh, go up and have a, a greater percent increase, but I think the overall cost for the county will decrease because of that.
The reason why my mind's up is it's. I watch my equipment and so like I had a lover that needed tires. Well, you know, they're. Only grand piece. So in that, that's split together with a discount. So. You know, I waited to my beginning of my budget, you know, to, so that's why I looked so high. It's right now instead of showing stall through the stuff, um. You know. A lot of stuff like miscellaneous and, you know, project, a lot of stuff, and then like, like my, like, you know, my fourteen, what's fourteen? Materials and stuff, a lot of that, like cattle guards are ordered and stuff like that, but you know, I won't see until spring. So. A lot of my budget, you'll see, you'll. It's just, it's. I can't court, you know, like it can't, it just doesn't come out a little bit at the time and it depends on when products come in and stuff like that. Like heavy equipment, which we didn't order any equipment. All that was, was just for the lease payments. And so I just budgeted enough to, to cover the lease payments on the motor graders. So that's why that is like already used because I didn't.
We didn't. Correct.
So that's why some of that shows so high.
Do you have a lot of your equipment on, on lease or is it?
No, I just have them two motor graders.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I got, you know, Jay's got a loader and a skidster.
Have you felt any benefit lease over purchase?
You know, um, the thing I don't like about it is at the end of the lease, I, I'm, I'm working on. I'm working with Caterpillar and John Deere right now. Um, they've come out with some pretty good stuff where. At the end of the lease, you can buy them for like a dollar, stuff like that. Um, I like, I don't like these leases because at the end of the six years, and we still have three years to go. You know, we owe like a hundred and forty thousand on them. So. You know, we didn't have to put no money down, but you paid at the end, you know, so you, you either let them take it. And you get nothing.
Sure.
Where you pay that hundred and forty. Uh, uh, and you're paying interest, you know, um, on them, um, where the ones we own. You know, a lot of them, cause we're running, we're trying to run them longer and stuff, but at least. You know, long as I stay under ten thousand hours, I, I can always get one twenty, one thirty. Um, so. You know, and, and we get such a, you know, we get the government deal when we buy them that, you know, yeah, we're, we're paying four sixty for them, but. You know, you're running them nine years and still getting that one forty out of them, you know, and then you put that, you know, you can. You know, put that towards the next one, you know, and then you drop that down, you know, so you're into three hundred thousand, you know, and when you buy them and then. You know, but these here. Ain't getting nothing, you know, it's just when they're up, they're up. And the way I do the motor grade, motor graders are, road bridges, bread and butter, you know, they, they go every day. Um, you know, they average, we average fifteen hundred hours a year on all of them. Some a little more, depends on how much snow we get. I budget them bumper to bumper. Only thing we have to pay is, you know, tires and oil changes. So, and then we, but like we got a few of them that are out of warranty, so we're trying to run them longer. Um, but long as we stay under that ten thousand hours, I mean, I got a couple close, you know, they're, well, they're not close. We're, we're fifteen, seventeen hundred hours. From hitting ten thousand, um, motor grader, what happens once you get ten thousand, you know, your. Differentials go bad, all your, your, and our roads, you know, because of using mad water and stuff, they're so hard, all your. All your bushings are bad, you know, so it costs a lot to refurbish them, you know, so you. I just try to get as much out of this I can where we can still get pretty good profit out of them and then ship them on down the road. But, um, that's so anyway, back to the heavy equipment. That's why, cause I just put enough in there to pay the lease on that. Billy, when we, when we lease those, those are the John Neers, right? Two cats. Those were the two cats. When we run all those numbers, it's, we calculated that we're gonna lose about ninety thousand dollars a machine. Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
But at that point, that's all the options we had.
That, that was all we had. Um, like I said, I'm working and they. They've come out and the Caterpillar basically has come out with a really, I mean, like I said, where. Women putting the money down, you pay a little more monthly, it's a little more, or, or we didn't do it annually. It'd be a little more annually, not much. I mean, I think it was eleven thousand dollars or more. Um, but at the end of it. We can buy it for a dollar, you know, I'm. Um, I, I don't, I don't mind that, you know, I just sees these two. You mean. You know, you're, you know, we're, we're paying nine, you know, writing ninety thousand for them, you know, a year. And then at the end of the year, you know, we still have to. Yeah, yeah.
What's the length of the term on those, on the cats? That's not bad then, is it?
It's not, not terrible.
That they could be bought out at any point.
You can buy it at any point. Yeah. And, and then they, and then like on these, and that's another, that's a good point on, on. This one we got, we get kind of penalized. That, that was the only way we could do this. But on the new ones, you, you, you don't get penalized. And, you know. Everything you put towards it goes towards that by, and each month he can look, see what the buyout price is on it, which I like that too. If some change in revenue or whatever, you just pay them off without any, this, this one we can't. This one will get penalized if we pay them off.
It's one worth keeping in mind. Anything catch your eye when we take a look at the, uh. Expense comparison, Billy?
Um, you know, the only thing I'm, you know, and I mean, I know it doesn't look like it, but. The mad water kind of I got, you know, we, you know, normally we go through about one point seven million in magic every year. And then. The company that, the companies that I dealt with all got bowled, bought out by one company. So the prices just like they just tripled in price. So then during budget or whatever, we, we talked about, I bought a Brian machine. Well, I taught the Brian machine and give it what they, what they told me. You know, almost three months later than they, you know, obviously would come in, uh, which by the way, is working great. But of course it was towards the end of the year. And then also when these companies all. Bought out, so a lot of invoices that I bought before this, that we should have got invoices when I was buying the mag in the spring. They got mis- mixed up. So, you know, I had almost. It was like a hundred and eighty some thousand dollars of mag that should have been on last year's budget. It had to come out of this one. So, you know, I was way over on my bag. But if you look at it, I did some crazy stuff with the mad water this year, you know, I, I. I watered it down to try to push it further and, uh, I did a lot of experiments. And, you know, we had a little, some washboards on roads and stuff. Um, but if you. If you look at it, total, you know, total for this year, I, I use less than eight hundred thousand. Well. Been using like one point seven, so I am finding ways of making stuff work. It's not as. Good as, it's probably not. It's probably not as good as it used, you know, the way we could make the roads super hard and, and super smoother, but. In some areas, at least, you know, because of DQ mixed with the air quality, I can keep the, I can keep the dust down. And, you know, having to blade a tad more in spots, you don't have to go touch up, you know, hills that'll get rough and stuff, but, um. So I'm trying.
Good job.
So. But that's, that's the only one that I'm real, I was really. Messed up on on me. On my road bridge budget.
Well, next year that cost will pretty much go away.
Yeah, exactly, because we got our machine.
Correct.
In, and yeah, so that's working and you know that, you know, we just use more than white salt. And it, that's, that stuff's real cheap, you know.
It's that same stuff you put down before a storm plumb roads.
That that brine, yeah. Yeah. And this year what I'm doing. I'm just, I'm just. I'm pretty much, because I know how, you know, spots. Were. You know, like paradise and that, you know, I had quite a few wrecks out there, you know, I'll use pretty good salt out there, but. All around up in town and all that, I'm just, I'm just using sand. See how that goes.
Sure. It'll either work or not.
Yeah.
Right. Any questions for Billy in regards to?
Yeah, I've just got one.
Great, thank you.
Once you completely end of the program with the brine machine. What what are you anticipating? On your savings over time?
Oh, it's gonna cost me probably. For the salt, just the salt. You know, to to do all our roads. Take, you know. I'm I'm gonna be into it probably, I mean, if the prices stay the same, if they if they stay the same since you're. I'll be into it, right? Right at probably four hundred and eighty thousand and we've been spending one point seven, one point eight million on that. So.
That's significant.
Oh, yeah, 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 this machine's, it's. It's cool. It's, and we've been, you know, it was pretty like, but. Um, we've got it, you know, it's pretty, you just put your percentage. And, you know, you gotta, when you make mag. You, you get. Put on to mix with the dirt. Um, it's twenty three percent. You know, with water, so you you just set the machine and it spits it out and. It's ready to go on the road.
So 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 how how long do you anticipate? This machine to be. I don't want to say this. To keep up with what you need before it. Gets to where you're gonna have to replace it at some point.
Oh.
Don't know?
No, I don't, you know, I, you know, we clean it out every time, that's the biggest thing, you know, it's corrosive. But, you know, we 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 got like. Chemicals, we run through it every time we couldn't make it and stuff, so it should last a long, long time, I mean, there's probably some computer. You know, that probably will go bad, but nothing, it's it's a pretty simple system, it. It's uh. Just a big hopper. And it just, the computer will send it back through till it reaches that twenty three percent, then it spits it out. So it it just, you know, it takes a lot of water, that's that's the thing it does, but, you know, we were. You know, running it. Six hours a day and we were, we were making only two thousand gallons. So, and I I got it, and so I was very happy because we'll have to make. You know, right at about twenty one thousand a day, keep up. With the blades. So, but it, and that's what my biggest fear was, is maybe it doesn't, and and we were running it low, so it'll, we can make more if we add to.
Great. It's worth the investment.
Yeah, it it's, yeah, it's the way to go.
Any questions for Billy regards to Roden Bridge?
Uh, just one, so like, when you get tires. And and they hold the. Sheriff's office, that's not in here, you send those ahead of.
I, yeah. Well, some departments, and some departments that don't. Budget money normally, I'll just take it out of my budget. And put them on. But like the sheriff's office, they have a budget for that, so in like the ambulance. I I send them the bills and then they reimburse us.
Good. No more on Roden Bridge, we'll move on to the next.
Yeah.
Of course, we included the uh, check details if anyone, when they went through. Had questions in that regard. Maybe we'll go on the next.
Golf course.
Where are they up here? Can you give them? So we can we can go through this part and she then give you.
Are you? Well, Billy's looking that up for those online, we're currently looking at a fiscal year twenty five first quarter comparison to fiscal year. Twenty six first quarter comparison. Uh, twenty five, we had. Uh, spent. Right at twenty one million dollars this year. Uh, we are at twelve point five million dollars, so there's been a reduction of eight point nine million dollars in expenditures for. Uh, first quarter comparisons. Great. Yeah, we'll be looking at that one. Um, on this one. There's good and bad with uh, with. Our new entity here, of course, and I I hear a lot of good things from people about what's occurring in the pro shop and. Uh, people out there. Playing golf, it's all pretty positive, I think. Uh, when we take. Quarter comparison, and it's difficult because I don't think last year. Uh, you were fully engaged as far as running it, if that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it was late.
Correct.
Like gee, when I got started, yeah.
So to do an actual comparison is is. I don't think uh, something that we can prudently do at this point, other than for um, illustration purposes. But when you take a look and go through the individual expense categories, is there anything that? Um, catches your eye, Billy?
Well. Was, it's been hard out there because when I took over. You know, we had noticed it didn't work, so I've I've had to spend a lot of money. To with everything. Back up to run and um. You know, the the buildings were a mess, um, all the equipment, you know, we had mowers that didn't work, we had. It seems like every little aspect was just so rundown. That I didn't have, the sprinkler system didn't work right, so I had to dump a bunch of money into getting that. Right, I mean, they put in a really good sprinkler system. And knowing you how to run it, and then they cut lines, they didn't run the electrical lines right, so. That so, so we had, we've had to redo everything and we, and then we had to do the ponds, we had to get the stuff, you know, the. The to get the to the pumps and then I had, I had both pumps needed rebuilt, so it's been. It's been a. It's been a. You know, and I, and I'm, I. You know, you know, we, when we had all that money to. At one point. Five million, I think it was to to go in there and update everything. You know, I've been moving fast to try to get back with the car and everything, and so, I mean, that's, you know, it's gonna look. Way worse as it is, but. You know, there's. Nothing I haven't like rebuilt out there, um. You know, there's, I mean, I'm working on drainage now because when they put the sprinkler system in. All the French drains and that, you know, and it's all pipe. You know, perforated pipe, it cut through them. So that's why we have a lot of holes that have, you know, water sitting on them and that's all. I don't want to mess with the sprinklers, so I had real verti come out, shoot a lot of stuff and we're putting in different types of drains and we're running them, and so. You know, and then the greens, you know, none of the greens, you know, then we're just all natural greens and what, and what I've learned since a short time I've been doing this. He wants your grain, the greens is what people care about, that if you're a golfer, the greens are. And so we rebuilt that one. Uh, you know, and it's about sixty grand to rebuild them, putting the drains under them and all this, and getting, you know. Um, you know, I'd like to do one a year because they're just all natural, and when you test the soils, it, they're just. Just like hard clay, it's just in there, so you don't, that's why the greens aren't as good as they should be. You know, I'm just trying to make it as good as it can possibly be, um. You know, I've learned a lot, um, and I think, but now I think, you know, we. You know, we'll just. We can slow down and we can, we can just. Pick our, you know, I got. I got. You know, buildings. You know. Best they can be, um, we got great equipment now. So, and then, you know, we're trying to make it where it makes revenue. All year long, Rosie can kind of give you some stuff. Um, can I tell you where? How much we have. How much money we have actually increased out there. Go ahead.
Um, well, just this year, this this. Twenty twenty five year, just from twenty twenty four. Which again, like you stated, we don't have great documentation, so we will base off what we do have.
Correct.
Using light speed. So the golf course, just as this is just based on our balance sheet and our deposit brought in um. Four hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars this year, and that's a ninety seven thousand dollar increase from the twenty twenty four season.
Now, when you say this year, is that the complete fiscal year, Rosie, or is that a?
Just our golf course year, so that's April fifteenth through October fifteenth.
Okay, so we have an overlap on the fiscal year, thank you.
Thank you.
So we had did a really great increase in that. There was about a hundred thousand dollar increase in the pro shop. Because we've changed a ton of stuff with the pro shop, so we've brought in revenue, um, but. We saw literally an increase across the board and almost. Everything. Um, I indicated in red on the second and third sheet. Anywhere we were less than the year previous. But all of it. Has an explanation. So. Um, other than maybe the eighteen holes public, which is difficult because you're basing it on back nines and we didn't really track back nines correctly. The twenty third year or twenty three or twenty four.
Okay.
Because it wasn't put into our light speed system correctly, and it's still a learning process, that we're still, there's still some little tweaks to do with light speed that we're learning as we go. But overall. Um, we saw our couple membership dip, but we saw our senior membership go up, so my assumption is that some of those couples. Transitioned to seniors this past year, and that's why our senior membership grew. Um. But really, I mean. We've done. I mean, I think we've done amazing as far as it just continues to grow, people are happy. Um, the one thing that we did, we talked about, hey, Billy talked with you guys about it last year, was. Increasing our membership fees, um. This front page just kind of tells you. What our memberships are golfing at, most members are golfing about a nine dollar and sixty cent round. We charge the public a twenty dollar round, this is a nine full round, not an eighteen full round. And so just for. You know, just to see what we were up against, I pulled our top five members. To see what they were golfing a year. Most of, they're averaging a hundred and seven rounds a year for my top five golfers, so they're golfing for two dollars and ninety nine cents a round.
That's a heck of a deal, isn't it?
That's a heck of a deal, that's about an eighty five percent saving.
One one thing that was me about our memberships. Is there, we have no cap.
Correct.
I'd love to do a membership where, you know. You have like an unlimited, it's this much money or whatever, right now. And, you know, there's, these guys are diehards, and there's guys that, you know, like they'll, they'll come and play eighteen holes and then come back after lunch and play another. Eighteen, nine holes, and then you'll see Matt Knight playing at Wensley, you know, it's.
They need to get a job.
Oh, I know. What I'm saying is it's it's whatever you. But now's the time, because we. We're running Christmas specials about selling memberships, so if you guys want us, we'll stick everything the same, we're good. Like even, but you know, we've made a lot of money, tell them about the driving range.
Oh, my gosh. That's crazy, the driving, I mean. Uh, let's see. So and the driving range really doesn't cost us much because, you know, we we do very little to maintain it. And we made almost six grand off, um. Uh, well, we're just just range cards, tokens were twelve grand, so there's eighteen grand. Just our driving range.
Anything.
And that's five dollar tokens.
Just five dollar.
So one of, one of the things that came up in conversations I've had with people and I don't golf, uh, I have enough frustration in my life, but. Is um. The rates that we charge may be significantly less than other courses.
Mainly it's our membership rates, our our nine and eighteen holes are comparable, we're still one of the lowest. We're like one of the four lowest, I think, in that I pulled from, that I've used in the last two years, I'm trying not to go outside of what I'm currently using. Um, but it's our membership rate that really, we're so, we're so much lower than everyone else in the state, and so. We're typically like three hundred and eighty five dollars is our membership fee for a single. Most peo- most places in the state is about six hundred dollars for a single member. So that's where. My concern is that. Because we are low when we do decide to start rising and raising that rate, that, you know, people are gonna have. Wallet chuck. So.
Please.
Just for benefits, because I know he wasn't on the board, the rest of us were, so. Um, we step back in time, um, the golf course was run by a board. For us. Um, they knew that the 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 asset. Was getting in pretty bad shape, and we was gonna have to spend a lot of money. They actually came to us, told us that we take it over. Decided to take it over, I think it was one point eight, not one point five.
Some of your dead.
And with that, we said, Billy, we want you to fix the the floor. Want you to go drill it in water well, so we have other access to that, I think you had to fix the sewer, we had to fix the roof of the golf.
Years.
Had to do a lot of. Long work, the mowers. For more, for aspects. We was even to the point where I think. He was renting or leasing golf carts, um, it's costing us. So. Billy took it over. He uh, he came to us last year at the beginning of the the season and he pretty much begged us to increase the rates just because the information that he found. We as a board set those rates the way they were. He said, look, Billy, we understand that, we know it's gonna be painful this first year, we're gonna spend a ton of money. We want to keep the rates the same, and then revisit this next year, so I'm sure that's gonna be a conversation, like Billy said, coming up on. What the rates would want to be, but we didn't want to sticker shock everybody with us taking it over. Best thing, that one point eight million dollars, knowing that it's gonna be short, but it's.
True.
So. Just giving you a little history of how we got to where we was at, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody else, I mean, definitely most meetings. So we're not.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, I I think the attitude at that point in time was. We're either gonna just let it go to the devil or we're gonna do something about it, and so. Billy did something about it. Yeah. Yeah, that's right. You know, but.
But it's making one, I mean, it's, it's, they can, I mean, the pro shops. From twenty three, where in whatever it's being added. Can make, you know, I mean, just the money it's it's making, uh. Another, you know, the one thing, it's kind of painful, but I know we gotta do it, it's tournaments, you know, we. We lose. So much money on tournaments, you know, because what's our average, Jay, six, seven thousand?
Four hundred.
Yeah.
An average day and in the thick of it, I guess, would be the best way to put it, uh, weekends could be seven grand. Um, sixty eight hundred. Um, and then, of course, later in the season, it drops um, down to like four grand a day. Um, but tournaments, yes, we lose a significant amount of money because they take away our weekend. We lose our weekend income.
So that, you know, that's one thing, I mean, you know, when you're.
It rewards your members in a way, I mean, it's basically members in those tournaments, so that gives him a little some.
Exactly, no, it it, I mean, it's, you gotta. Exactly. No, it, it, I mean, it's, you gotta have them. I don't, you know, you sit there and go. You know, that's, you know, so.
So you need to hammer out a membership decision today so you can give Christmas.
Yeah, because people are already wanting to buy them. So I mean, it's up to you guys. Um, I mean, you can look at the numbers, we are. I mean, my goal was, you know, because we, we pretty much. I was hoping to be, you know, fifty percent more this year is what we end up being.
Membership?
No, I, I mean, for money's sake.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Last year it was thirty or three hundred and eighty and this year was four hundred and eighty.
Yeah, so it was, you know, so it was. I, you know, I think we're getting, getting a lot out of it. You know, it's, it's a nine hole course. I think we're. You know.
Sure. What kind of a capital expenses or expenditures overall will be? Will we be having for next year? Is it going to increase? It will come down? You know, the, these are.
I mean, like I said, there's, you know. I'm trying to be feeling, you know, um. You know, look. We, we're able to do, we're able to, you know, like we redid it, you know, the way the driving range up top was. I mean, you know, we modeled that and then moved to a one P box and we've done, you know, and, and I mean. The numbers look really good because I do a lot, I'm, I'm doing all the groundwork.
Sure.
You know, we're in the past, they hired people to do that. So. Um, you know, so long, you know, Roman Bridge has been doing all this stuff and rebuilding the greens and stuff like that. So. Um, but you know, like the equipment's good now and some of the big money items. You know, like, like, like the building, you know, the building had all sorts of issues, you know, um. Got that all fixed. So, um. You know, just basically try to improve the course. You know, like I said, I'd like to do a green in here. That's, you know, that's about sixty grand, you know, with Roman Bridge doing it. It's the materials you have to buy. Because you got, you gotta have big grass, special made and all that.
Did you charge back from, uh, uh, Roden Bridge to the golf course? Would you do that?
I, I don't, you know, I don't take any money, but I show.
Show it. Great. Excellent. So when you, you bring up, uh, memberships and Commissioner Bradley said, well, Christmas just here. As far as selling memberships, what are your thoughts? You've obviously thought as far as what would be ideal and what would be gouging, but she was just telling me.
I don't, I don't know what would be ideal. That's for you guys to decide. Um, I just, I just played around with a little. And I thought, okay, what if we increased it by fifteen dollars just across the board, which is minimal? I mean, that's not even a round of golf.
Sure.
Um. So to give you an example, a single member has to play nineteen point two five rounds of golf and pay, play to pay for their membership. If we increased it by fifteen dollars, they'd have to play twenty rounds of golf. So just across the board, if we did fifteen dollars. It doesn't change the amount of rounds of golf they have to play. Does that make sense? So nineteen point two five or twenty rounds is the same rounds. You're playing twenty rounds of golf. So it doesn't exponentially change. How many rounds? Because that's typically how people look at it. When they buy a membership, they say, okay. Am I going to be able to play sixteen rounds this year or twenty-five rounds this year or whatever to make up for the cost of the membership? So. Just increasingly at that slight amount across the board. I, I don't think it would affect, it's not affecting anybody, I don't think in a negative way.
Or you can leave it the same.
Or you can leave it the same.
Cap.
Well, cap it. Yes.
Where they, you know, after this many holes, they, they gotta. And then we can come up with a, like a. What kind of like our.
Yeah, it's, that is traditionally saved for like high-end golf courses. So you'll have a high-end golf course that'll do like, okay, you have a, like a tier one membership. You have a tier two membership and so on. And so you might have the, the high-end membership where like Billy said, it's unlimited. You can golf whenever you want, day, night, whatever. There are golf courses that have day-night memberships. Where maybe you can't golf the prime time of the day. You can only golf in the morning or you can golf in the evening, but you can't golf midday. They have all sorts of memberships that you can do, which we could do that, but typically small courses like ours don't do that. It's too much to manage. So they.
Correct.
Just a higher.
And, and, and the residents can play, should be able to play whenever available for tee times. Uh, can you cap the number of times that they can play on that membership and then have a? Add on after. I don't know. Um, and these are just thoughts. We want to be able to make it affordable for people. Absolutely. Uh, at the same time, we want to help, uh, offset our costs. So. What, what does the board think in that regard? Sam, you're the golfer here.
I, I would rather pay like a fifteen dollar extra than have it capped, having it capped. I want you to be a lot to try to keep it on just.
Well, you have to track it.
And say, I'm gonna buy a membership, but I only get twenty rounds off this membership. And Rosie's responsible for, only when I hit my twenty rounds, then, then it's like, I can get that point. Brother, see it.
Sure.
Being as it's such a sore season and I know, and it is at the end of the day, when I, well, I'd rather see a fifteen dollar increase.
Is fifteen dollars enough, enough?
You're still gonna, you're still, you still gonna have a lot of complaints for fifteen dollars, but. Um, they, these members, you know, like, like Rosie was saying, and you may know, I mean, I get it all the time that, you know, I, I, you know, I pretty much. You know, a, for my membership and it's only in June, you know, I mean, I get that all the time, you know, so they.
Correct. Yes.
It, it's the ones that buy a membership that don't play a lot that are gonna go, huh. But then we have, and bunch, you know, we have different. Memberships. So make, you know, but then that scares me because once, you know, we have what, three hundred, how many memberships do you sell?
Three hundred and forty-one.
Three hundred and forty-one. So is that going to drop down? You know?
It's.
So, so, so it costs what today?
Three eighty-five dollars for a single membership.
Three eighty-five. So we're talking raising it to four. Is that correct? With fifteen dollar increase. And that allows me to show up in the mornings, diddle dark, if I want to. I mean, realistically. Yeah, no, no, I understand that. But, but if, if I'm up to it, I could play all day long for that. I'd come back the next day and do the same thing through the course of the season. Sounds like a heck of a buy to me, quite frankly. Um. And fifteen dollars, if you could afford to three eighty-five, the fifteen is probably going to be an okay thing. Uh. I like that a lot better than trying to put a cap because I can see the. I can see the real bad things coming out of that one.
Okay. Any thoughts on it, Commissioner Stevens?
Well, like I said, we're achieving the state. I don't find anybody complaining. Just gotta look at the figures and they all know what places are other, they all know. So I don't, yeah, I don't. See why anybody complaining about that. Jeez. Positions they've done, you know?
Okay.
I'd like to keep the juniors the same and raise everybody else fifteen myself.
I like that idea as well.
I, I don't get any calls out here. The only two I did receive were both parents had kids and they appreciated the junior fees. Keep it cheap for those kids in my mind.
For that, the juniors that play out there, they're great guys, great kids. They come, I shouldn't say that. They're, they're girls and boys. I mean, they. They, they dress appropriate. They come out, they follow the rules. I mean, it's, I'm totally with. On that. They, it's, they, they're not out there horsing around. Um, I mean, they, they take it serious. It's really kind of nice to.
And the juniors is where, from where down?
So from up to eleven years of age, they can play for free. So eleven and down, they play for free with parents. Juniors is eleven to eighteen. And then we, we. We tweaked it a little, um, like the kids who came in from, you know, had just graduated from high school or maybe had just flipped to nineteen years old. We allowed it. We're like, you're still a junior. If you get juniors till high school technically. Um, but yeah, our junior membership that's actually went up this year, like by three grand. And that was with giving even a slightly more discounted rate to our high school team members. Which is just a deal that we made with the high school to, so that they could get out there and play.
Everyone good with that? Let's go ahead and move forward with that and. Would you have to sell twenty percent more?
On it.
Okay, enough.
I could send and invite all of them.
There you go. Give me that.
Okay, any questions? Any other questions? Thank you, Rosie. Any other questions pertaining to the golf course? Again, we've included the, uh. Expenditures by category for your review if you'd like later, commissioners. Up next would be, um, waste management. Waste management, um. Excuse me. Fiscal year twenty-five, we are at, uh. Two hun- two hundred nineteen thousand. Uh. Fiscal year twenty-six, first quarter, hundred ninety-four thousand or de- decrease of twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, anything on this one, Billy, that catches your eye? Hey, commissioners, anything on here? There's a. Gas and oil went up by eighty-five percent and water monitoring went up by sixty percent.
Yeah, that's just, that's because the EQ just required more testing on the water monitoring. Um. Other than that, it stays, you know, like I said, we had, you know, had a little more money, you know. Books because we got shredder. So of course it's. It made my, when, you know, my repairs go up more because of course you got my teeth and knives and stuff that shredded it. So, so just as we've added more stuff we do, you know, is. Things went up.
Great. Thank you for that. Um, any questions in this regard for Billy Pape? Um.
Do we, do we review the? I was just gonna, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Like, sure, real quick. And, um. January, we always decide if we're gonna do, uh. Use of the current rates. If we're gonna go up any.
Yes, thanks. Thank you.
And so. Did, well, here's these. I did call around today. This kind of shows you. But all around this, and he is, um. You know, Sweetwater County can't really go off of theirs. I mean, look at it because they tax, you know, it's, it's part of their property tax. Um, but it shows like other towns, but, um. But, you know, we're. If you look, if you look at Fremont County, um, and everybody does kinds of crazy stuff, but. Um, like Lincoln County, um, normally. And look. Pretty much, I don't even know how they, this horse sits over two hundred pounds. I don't even know they keep track of that, but, um. If you kind of go, go through, and I mean. You know, we are, for. Pretty cheap. Um, you know, I, I would never mess with the tires and stuff. I mean, I know we. You know, we're paying more to get rid of them. We're about right, you know, but. Yeah, if you went up on the tires, they're just gonna take themselves around. You know, they're gonna just throw them out in the desert and stuff. And that's, you know, that's the thing I worry about all this when you go up a little bit, but. It. You kind of see where we're at with our surrounding counties. I mean, we did refresh, we did go up two dollars on C and D last year. So we. So we did, you know, we did raise their.
Were we visiting these in January?
Yeah, we always, you know, we kind of start advertising. And. And then so people are.
Finds it.
Yeah. And then we, we always start changing our first.
So I wonder how in, in Rock Springs, they determine. Whether the dead animal is in the district or out of district.
Yeah.
Why would you do that?
You, you're, you know, you're skilled people are just going by whatever that person's telling them, you know?
That's integrity coming back.
Yeah, yeah. And that.
And we've lost them in some places.
It looks like the revenue for the first quarter of twenty-six was at ninety-four thousand dollars. Um, twenty-five, there was a. Journal adjustment for a carryover of funds. Uh, so that we can't compare that at all. Have to go back to twenty-four. That was a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So. Have we had less usage over the? From, uh, twenty-four to twenty-six?
Just, you know. The C and D slowed down, I think, I think because interest rates and stuff were so high. So our C and D, MSW stayed the same. I mean, its tonnage was right. C and D dropped quite a bit. Now, you know, metal, metal increased, but just, um. Just C and D drops quite a bit, you know, um, they, we. Can't remember exactly. It was like twenty percent it dropped. It's starting to slowly come back now. Um, you know, it's just, it's just the way kind of follows the con builders. Yeah, the builders, you know, the interest rates are low. C and D's coming in like crazy.
Any thoughts on rates on this for Billy Pape? We can leave the tires the same and increase on a percentage of everything else or? Continue on the same path?
I'd like to continue on the same path myself.
Yeah, it's pretty nice to be able to drive around the country today and not look out in some little wash somewhere and see. Stuff, if you would. And it's hard to tell what that stuff could be comprised of. Used to be, I can remember a lot of years when. I can see animal carcasses from hunters that were too late getting them home would be, it's hard to tell where they'd be. Along the road accidentally fell off, so to speak. You know, so I, I think. In my mind, at least, the services that this, these rates present are a benefit to everybody in the community. You gotta pay a little, but you get rid of a lot. But we've all seen what the expenses are to put up, to, to fill these, to take care of these landfills and. And, uh.
Wonderful.
No, I'm fi- I'm fine with. I'm fine with, with what we're looking at here.
Commissioner White?
I agree. So if the rate's the same for another year.
Excellent. Commissioner Stevens?
So on the paint, this eight dollar scale charge.
Yeah.
So when I take it out there, they just ask me how many there is. And what, what are we talking, what's the difference here?
Um. Kind of, like when you take it out, how much you take?
Well, in, in, you know, on cans or.
Normally what they'll do is they'll just charge you that scale fee, that eight bucks or whatever, up to like five gallons. And then, and then, and then now they'll add to it after that. Very, you know, with pain, we don't. Um, you know, unless some guy shows up with a bunch of five gallon cans. Normally, normally it's, it's, you know, they'll bring like. A gallon and a half or a gal, you know, we don't get a lot of pain, believe it or not. Uh, but that's kind of how they. But that's kind of how they've been doing it is just it, they just charge that up to like five gallons and then if it's five gallons and they, they, they
Yeah, I just think they asked me, but I mean, I was so often I just clean house and
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just get tired of looking at it and it's, whether it's good or not, but I just, it seemed like they asked how many I dumped in there, pretty sure.
Yeah, they just, they, they just keep track of it because I, you know, I have to, I have to show the DEQ because we have to, we have to spread it out on a pad and let it dry and then peel it up and then make sure we put it into the wine. So I have to, I have to do a report, you know, twice a year saying
How many gallons?
So is that, is that dumpster out here, is that for the dead animals? The one that's on the outside up here at transfer station?
Well, we quit doing that because the, the QD line has so now you have to take it on in, you know, we don't charge.
What do I, if I got?
Some brings up a horse or something like
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
If you just have parts of elk or deer or whatever, we take that, we just, if that's all they're bringing. If, if they bring it with their trash, then of course they gotta pay, but if they just show up with the, you know, the parts that they're getting rid of, we did, we let them dump for free.
But what about, what, what about the whole animal? Let's say if I got Dobbin passed away and I need to get rid of him, I don't want to put him in the backyard.
They, we charge for that and then they, they charge by the ton. So normally like a dead horse is like 35, 50s.
Yeah.
I took one to Piney and they, they followed me out through the pit, you know, get off and come back and I was expecting I didn't know what to say.
Was it a dog? So how much did it weigh?
So are you complaining?
But it was under a ton, right?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, I went through that whole process. I was worried like, you know, how much to do and we got full of the scale. I said, how much is a dollar?
They recognized you.
They're down there, instead of going to where they grind, I went left and went up there and there's where they was.
Yeah, put in the pine pit.
Good job, Dave. You just got one of Billy's.
Yeah, I got it right.
Sending the bill.
Probably better now. You've kind of exposed yourself.
Yes, you did.
Well, of course, I was smart and I gave one last one away.
Think everyone's in agreement, keep pricing the same.
Same.
Yeah. I mean, did I miss that at all? I think that's what I heard across the board.
I mean, you know, we'd be get that extension, you know, because they're letting me do another here. So that, you know, that pushes us off. I, you know, I know Eric says about he thinks seven to nine, but if, if our tonnage is sticking to where the numbers are right now, I think it'll be more probably 10 into 12 years where we're gonna do a new line sale. You know, but then that is big money. That's 30 million, you know, it'll be
Thank you for that. Up next is recycling.
Recycling pretty much just sticks the same. It's
Everything is very consistent except for capital asset purchase back in '25.
Yep. And the biggest thing there is is just replacing containers, you know, because they just get wore out. And, and that's, that's pretty much what that, that's but you know, we get right now, we're getting pretty good revenue on the farm board.
Yeah, looking at your recyclables revenue, first quarter, '25, '26. '25 was at 25,000, '26 was down 4,000 to 21,000.
And that's just, that's just how, you know, how the
Sure.
Because it's where it all goes. It's just what the rate we get paid.
Right. Any questions from anyone regarding recycling? Last up for Billy is the transfer station. And on that what the first quarter, '25 versus '26 is virtually a same dollar amount as far as expenses. Revenue has gone from 25, 81,000, the first quarter of '26, $108,000. So there's an increase there 27,000. Everything's going good there.
Yeah, yeah, it pretty much stays the same. And then, you know, like lines contract is in next year.
So that raises the question, I'm not saying that I'm a proponent for it, I'm just curious. That's all curiosity. Why don't we have our own trucks and do it ourselves?
You know, when I took over, that was my thing. I was like, why are we hauling it? And I, and it, this is just always the way it's been. So
Would we have a cost savings on it, do you think? Because ultimately what we're trying to accomplish, Billy, is not micromanage you, but our expenses. Today's been really informative for me and it's taught me a lot.
I mean, we definitely can do, can do it way cheaper because of what we pay in fuel and, and, you know, and you know, I mean, we, you know, it's just like Blading Roads or whatever, we, it would get the equipment cheaper, you know? I mean, we do, our employees, you know, we pay them good and they benefit so that, that, you know, that, that's your say, but no, I mean, for your, your answer is, yeah, no, we could definitely do it cheaper. You know, it'd be kind of the same thing as like we talked about the golf course, you know, and it takes not not that, you know, if you ask, ask me to do that, I would probably take a couple of my older trucks and build them to haul containers and then replace them, you know, but you're gonna have, you know, you gotta get started. The one thing I have done since we've been there, because I didn't know if we'd ever go down this route, you know, when I took over, we didn't own many bins. The bins were all, you know, M&amp;M's and I we own all our bins now. I've been, I've been replacing all the bins where we own our bins. That was the biggest thing, well, I think back in the day they never did have road bridge or whoever haul it or transfer station or, you know, however we want to put it, haul it. Because we didn't, we, we didn't own no bins. So all the bins were owned by, you know, when Hayden did it, then when Ryan took over, he brought all the bins. We own all our bins now. I did, that's why if you notice every budget year, I've been buying four or five or whatever. There, when I first took over, I think, I think about eight, one year and I, so I've been buying it every year. I just buy a few more bins. So we so that extent, I think that was a big thing that scared him was if back in the days that they said, oh, we ain't gonna do that no more. You were gonna, you know, you were gonna have to, you know, come up with 50 bins, you know, and, but we own them now. So really all it is now, and you know, we run the transfer station now. So we took over that. And that is, I think, going great. Dewey and Jacob, that's their do a wonderful job to keep it super clean. I mean, and I've been very happy with, with, when we took that over there. Then we took dump trailers now, we take whatever up there. No, for your answer, yeah, you definitely, we could do it cheap.
Okay, just curiosity because at least a portion of the board believes that we'll continue with a downward revenue cycle. And so what do we need to think of being proactive in the future and how do we address it? And that's the purpose of the meetings is how do we save money?
Right.
And we've talked about that. It's not this department, hey, you're doing this, you're wrong, you're doing this wrong. No, it's what do you see and how can we help our constituents save money ultimately and, and keep us going on the same path? Any questions for Billy Pape in this regard? Thank you. I appreciate everything.
You bet. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Stephanie and Tammy, please. Ladies, hello.
Okay.
How are you?
Good.
Is that mic on? Looks like Yep, thank you.
We get lighter ones? I'm just having them okaying, is that me?
Please hurry because Monty wants to get up here too. Got you.
So I wanted to pass these out.
Here, just standing here.
So I appreciate you guys meeting with us today. I just wanted to clarify some of the numbers that you were going over in June. But first I wanted to take the opportunity to update you on some of the things that was going with Happy Endings, not the rescue. And I don't know if you guys have had a chance, you keep buying us all the rescue, didn't you?
I got the grand opening or something.
Yeah, what'd you think? Yeah, we're really fortunate to be on Main Street. And one of the things, just give you a brief update. Try to make it quick. We get the visibility that we haven't had before. So people stop by all the time, they drop off supplies. Jim Mitchell just dropped off a crate, some dog food, some cat food. Way pets and dog beds. Maybe, maybe we give you just again, we got towels and bull smooches. Yeah, so it's a really great place. I really like being on Main Street. It's a temporary place. But it's just amazing how the community has come together. They see us. They're active with us. Our fundraising has been phenomenal. And we have a lot of cats. We've got a lot of dogs right now. We always have to run cats or dogs, but we've had monthly adoption days, which we haven't done before. So every month we, for three or four hours on a Sunday, Saturday or Sunday, we have adoption day and we invite people to come and visit our animals and take a look at what we have. We foster all of our dogs, so we don't have usually dogs at the shelter, but we do have place for them. But we, our shelter is mainly for cats. And our adoptions have been, how many people do you think we have just sent in? 20? Eight to 30. I mean, average. In a two hour time scale. It was wonderful. We adopted out two cats and I'm gonna go meet meeting. So it, it's just been a really great spot for us. Recently, I've worked with Skyline High School as part of an art project. They come and take pictures of all of our dogs and cats and we're gonna promote those on our social media page because it's really, believe it or not, hard to take pictures of dogs and cats. He never sits down.
Okay.
And let's see, what else have we done? We've had our seniors come over a couple of times this summer and that's been very successful. From the Sublet Center, Susan Strength though has organized those. And let's see, what else? And just recently, this last month, we've started working through the VA's office. And then Big Piney with his 18 cat. And we have been working with a gentleman here, they're both disabled vets. We've been working with the gentleman here at Pine Dale. He has 14. So between the two of them, there's over 30 cats. So it's been a busy month.
What's the attraction to cats?
Eating streams. Right, like, yeah.
Is it?
So they're gonna get, they're, they're gonna give her most of those will?
We're working with them, but you know, I think a lot of, I think it's therapeutic. We have animals that depend on funding. So you have to be real cautious. Just don't want to wait and pick them all away. We want to help them. First of all, we want to stay in neuter then. It's a little memorial, staying neutered, helping with those costs for us. We're also working with the towns, which we always do, and the towns have been great to work with. Don't get a lot of funding from the towns. Markel Tuncian, the town that funded us right now. So it's, it's a work in progress, but also all I'm saying is with this visibility comes a lot of responsibility as well. So we've been quite busy.
Do you euthanize many?
Euthanized unless it's medically necessary.
Okay.
Because we've lost a kitten in the last 18 months. We've had a few kittens that have failure to thrive and they're make it so.
So are there any vets around that give you discounts on spays and neuters?
You keep asking that. No, we, do you know someone?
And have you approached the towns to chip in on this? I know. Sure.
They've been consistent. And interestingly enough, Mark Markleton and Tim Piney are the only ones who have a facility. And we've worked with, we work with all the towns really well, but it's really hard when folks don't have a facility to keep the animals.
Then you have a current one for another nine months or so, I'm guessing?
No, we haven't until February 2027.
Okay.
So we're still on the lookout for a facility. See, what did I miss? Monty with the town, I don't know if you guys noticed, but do you know that Monty Miles is our animal control officer and he's only part time?
I didn't know that.
For the county, for the county.
County, you know, the sheriff's.
Yeah. He's always swamped. So
Wouldn't I feel walking that door?
Excuse me?
Wouldn't I feel walking that door? You know, has there ever been to our meeting or anything? Everybody knowing or not?
I know, I know him.
Enjoying us.
No, I'd like to be.
Yeah, oh, yeah. He's a great guy. But he's always busy and we work really well, like just recently. The county has three cats and a dog, Pepper, and we're helping him trying to find a home for that dog. So
Doug, you have a dog?
You could always use a couple more cats, Doug.
You used to have a dog.
He's gonna get a couple more cats if he doesn't stay in neuter as fast.
No, that won't happen. I have a way to spay and or neuter.
Right, so right now we have 14 animals. Four of them are 150 year old and Derek authors, because Austin was the best place for dogs, you know, like a try to kill a lot of dogs and we had 10 cats. So Jessica, could you bring up that link that I sent you?
I'm sorry, I thought you were bringing your laptop.
That's, I didn't know if you can bring it up just so that they can see.
I have to be, you have to be a participant to share your screen. I'm sorry, Tammy, I just thought
Oh heavens, no, I don't want to share my laptop. But we use Pet Finders as a website to which we promote all our animals, which is available throughout the world. So if you have animals that you're looking for in Rock Springs, you can hone it down just to Rock Springs for Sublet County. You can look at Sublet County and that's something that I'm working with Sheriff Leir on, hoping that we can make the county website more productive for Monty because right now all he shares, all of his animals on his Facebook. And it's usually through like Sublet County for sale. So we are working with the county on trying to make it a more productive site. Because if someone Because if someone loses their animal, where do they go? A lot of people don't realize the sheriff's office has a Facebook page, but Monte doesn't have a page for his own.
Does the county hold many pets?
I don't know, you have to ask, I, I don't.
Okay.
I don't know if they keep track of them. I know it seems like we always have more.
Okay.
Like I said, right now, the county has one dog and two cats. And they're over at the town of Pine Dale facility, from my knowledge, yeah, like, yeah. So that's a little bit about us and what we've done. This summer has been busy, but it's been fun and it's been productive, and we're getting out in the community and any ideas, suggestions you guys have, we'd love to hear them. But um, I just wanted to give you. Yeah, this is not.
That's why I'm sorry. Kind of mute myself here.
So to get to the fun part of what we're here for is, I don't know if you guys remember in June, when we sat here and Terry was here and we discussed the numbers and kind of got a misunderstanding. I was asking for twelve thousand five hundred for current expenses that we had for twenty-four, twenty-five. And somehow it got this considered that the twelve thousand five hundred was for this fiscal year. And that's not the case. I was asking for twenty thousand dollars for this just. And because we were budgeted twenty-four, twenty-five or six thousand, we had twelve thousand five hundred dollars worth of expenses just for Sublet County. And so when I talked to um, Jessica, she just thought I should come and talk to you guys about this and see if we could get an additional sixty-five hundred for last festival year and then change that. My animal budget to twenty thousand, which is what I requested.
Twenty-three, right?
I think, sure. I think it was just one, was it?
There are growth, let's see, requesting.
Yeah, twenty-three. And the thing is, I don't know if we're gonna be able to utilize all of it, because we, we send you guys the receipts, so it's not like you give us a point check. And you spend it however you wish. We send you, we give you the receipts. It's just a reimbursement. And so we show you all the receipts that we have collected from just the Sublet County animals. I'm not talking Pine Dale, Big Piney, anybody else. Just talking Sublet County, and it's just the vet bills. It's not the food, it's not the vaccinations that we supply. It's just reimbursement for what the vets charge us for those animals.
So long story short, and thank you for all of that explanation, it's greatly beneficial. Cause you tell us things that I don't know and.
Well, obviously, I'd tell you things I don't know.
I could tell that. So basically, we're looking for, it's a request for sixty-five hundred dollars that what I'm understanding correctly. Great, thank you. Discussion with, go ahead, was there something?
And to have the budget changed or to at least, I'm taking into consideration for this next school year to be twenty-three thousand dollars. Something what's in the frame of that?
Talking twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine thousand.
Potentially.
But really.
Cause she's only gonna charge us off to twenty-three, but just setting uh, money aside, right? Then they bill us for any of it, like last year, they did, we owed them twelve-five, we only paid them six, which is where she came up with the sixty-five. But then wanted the line item to be set at a max of twenty-three. No one that stayed the savings last year, it would only be twelve-five spent out of that.
Right, but our vet costs have gone up significantly.
So your plan on spending is probably full twenty-three?
Well, plus our animal numbers have increased. We're at exactly where we were last year after that year end. Um, where we took in over a hundred, just over a hundred animals and we're already there.
And this is only. Now you're taking from the county, right, not the municipalities, right? Cause you build the towns.
This is just for Sublet County animals, not the town.
So how did, how did you not end up with the ones that Monty currently has down in the town?
Well, we don't take um, feral cats. What we do, if they're kittens and we can have someplace where they can be fostered, contained. And the three cats that he has, and what's a feral cat? Never seen a feral cat. But we just don't have anyone who can take the time right now to tame the cats when we have, and shelter and we're gonna be working with the VAs, possibly a chum boy.
So this is only would be animals taken from residents in the county.
Sometimes we take three, first few. Like one of the cats, I'm.
If he, if he picks something up, he transfer them to you guys once in a while, if they're not feral.
They're not feral and they're not clean. And I would say, and you'd have to ask him, but I say, the majority of animals gets, we get after five days.
Either of Blahas or Byramans or the town, and then after their five-day stray hold, he rehomes them where they come to us, if we can.
And if you can't take them?
He, he tries.
Things on to them.
Okay, thank you.
So the town of Pine Dale and the town of Big Piney don't donate anything and you don't invoice them for anything?
I do.
And they pay those invoices?
No, we have.
So.
They told us no. And um I do have the numbers for our expenses. I know when we spoke back, you asked for that, so our expenses for just this festival year, July through November is seventeen thousand dollars. That's what we've incurred in expenses. Um, our vet expenses are um, thirteen thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, which is seventy-eight percent of our overall expenses. And then the food, the vaccinations, transportation, um, things like that, total about twenty-five hundred. I'm so sorry, twenty-four hundred.
And these things are all spayed or neutered before they leave your control again?
No, depending on age. Depending on their age. Like I'm adopting out a cat, it's a county cat, the kitten, it's four months old, Thursday, I'm taking this kitten to LaFerriman's to be it's talking, so he's gonna be neutered while we have the cats. But I'm adopting him out today and I'll pick him up, take him over. Make sure. We always make sure that there's getting moved at least.
So out of that twenty-three thousand, what does the county paying for the spay and neutering room and board? For the, the time that the animals in your facility are.
Focusing and raiding.
Just only, and what?
Um, spay and neuter or in the rabies vaccinations, but anything additional or optional was, hasn't been submitted.
So it's just the spay and neuter? And it's not, 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 no room and board, nothing else?
Well, no, it can, it can be kennel if, if there's a surgery that happens.
Sure, if it's true of that, but it's not.
Not. And you see all.
Thoughts, comments from the board?
Well, I think we should have taken her up on the twenty, then Sam went and found a twenty-three. So. Well, it's one of those things, you know, you look at, if we didn't have a way to collect them, they'd be all over the country. And I think it's my personal thought is, my commission thought is, if we can help in a small way, we should.
Thank you.
I agree. It's a problem that we have. Try to correct this again, I guess.
Anything from you?
Should I say what I'm thinking or what's, what are quite correct? It's too bad the vets, I just can't wait, the amount of vets around wouldn't donate or cheapen things up a little for a cause like this, but.
Yes, if, if I may, so Michelle Smith, who's the town animal control officer and ourselves and then be approaching Big Piney and Marpleton, we are looking at possibly next year starting out having a vet, uh, vet come in, traveling vet to see a bayneuter once a quarter cheaply.
I think anything like that's good, because these things are like wildfire. I can show you streets in Piney that have forty or fifty that, you know, somebody collects one and then it becomes your problem eventually.
Well, that's kind of what's, what's going on, and it's, it's a horrible problem and it's, it's sad because these animals just need a little bit of attention if we spay and neuter everything. Um, it, it would be at least manageable. And we, um, I know Lo, I'm on the Lobo Memorial Board and Lobo has helped with a trap spay neuter in Marpleton. Cause the gal was, she collected twenty-six cats.
Oh, it's a problem.
So I just want you to know, I collected a twenty-three pound stone and that was not fine, now it's helping veteran. He tracked it. It was covered.
Oh, that solves everything.
That was also why she's driving four of them to Byramans. Thursday, because less expensive for him, this is the other.
He's a, he's a nice person. Anything they had, Commissioner White?
So, so I'm curious on how the budget would look or what we would have to do with this required budget transfer, because essentially, we'd be paying you sixty-five hundred dollars right now, right? Then have we drawn anything on the twelve-five that we currently set in the, the last budget?
No, we usually do that in April, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to give you expenses quarterly or however you wish to do it. So, um, but no, I haven't drawn out anything on that, we have not on the twelve-five.
So I'm just curious on what would have to happen with the budget, which would probably be a question for Jessica. Um, would we have to do a budget transfer to change that line item? And then would we just use the sixty-five hundred dollars out of the current line item that we have set aside in order to approve for that?
You would have to do a budget transfer and the board would have to decide where, what account you would wanna draw it from. Um, and then as far as the fiscal year, there's twelve thousand five hundred, so yes, the sixty-five hundred would come out of there, but then if they had expenses that exceeded the twelve-five, then it would go in the hole. So it would also need to be on a ju, budget transfer, it wouldn't.
Yeah, so what I'm seeing right now is if we was to approve this today, we'd pay the sixty-five hundred dollars out of that line item, do a budget transfer to establish that line item back to whatever number we just deem necessary at that point. Whether it be the full twenty-three thousand or we just bump it back up to twelve-five.
Sounds right.
Good. Any comments, questions from individuals online or in attendance?
I have one question. You haven't submitted anything yet for this year. So you guys are paying these bills via donated money or? So would it make more sense to submit these things more often than, than once a year? Or are your donations sufficient enough that maybe you don't need it?
No, I would like to do it every quarter if we could.
It better make more sense in my mind.
Be good with that. Yes, okay.
But then kill your donation drive, you'll still have the desire to get out. Get people out.
I do it all the time. As a matter of fact, I was gonna let the five of you know, I've yet to see your name while I do this. We didn't sell any, so we're just keep going.
Okay, is there any uh further discussion, conversation on that? If not, does anyone have a motion in this regard?
Was there been with me to make?
Well, I'm, I'm moving back, taking a look at everyone.
All right, I'll make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that we make Happy Endings whole in the amount of six thousand five hundred dollars, which would come from the account we set aside at twelve-five. Um, and then at our first budget transfer that we do, we revisit what that number is at that time. But we back into that account.
Good with you? Yes, Jessica?
One more thing. We're, I'm getting ready to do a budget transfer and putting it before you on the first meeting in December, so.
Like to revisit that number at that point.
At that meeting.
If it's good with the rest of commissioners.
That's good. Great. Have a motion by Commissioner White, is there a second?
I'll say.
Is there any further conversation, discussion on this? All in favor? I oppose. Motion passed. Thank you so very much for coming in and taking care of our animals.
Thank you for helping us.
So what's spay and neuter costing you?
Depends. Depends how they are, the condition, but um, a spay generally is around four hundred and fifty dollars. A neuter, it depends where you get done. So a neuter is anywhere between the one hundred and twenty-five and
for a cat or dog, depending on weight. And that, I mean, it's gonna be, I think the information on there is three hundred average, but probably more three fifty. If you want, do you want?
I guess it's all the.
And that's just our costs, but there's additional cost that that's charged that we don't cover, like blood works that these, that people.
Sure. Okay.
Should go talk to the Douglas Commissioners. They're building their uh nonprofit animal control people, multi-million dollar facility right now.
Multi-million dollar facility? That is getting you guys up next year for four hundred and fifty thousand, but that's what we're um.
And go up to those Douglas.
I'll do that. Great.
Maybe they'll build us one.
I'll come back to you and not.
Thank you, Stephanie. Great to see you. Up next, uh, please, my rec board, Monte. Good, thank you.
Um, we're here on, can we discuss big piney hockey rink, but two parts. Uh, first part being that we gave money to Big Piney, um, Vipers Hockey in the twenty-four budget year. Um, for new boards. We offered somewhere, gave them some over sixty thousand dollars to acquire new used boards that they sourced Midwest, thought about they, the guys that do the maintenance over there. Found a contractor, contractor came in, put them up. Um, first windstorm came, half the boards came back down, glass broke. Um, they looked into it, decided that the anchors weren't set as deep as they were supposed to be set. I think they were set two inches, were supposed to be set about four inches in. So once you put that heavy glass on top of the boards, wind loading, they came back down. Um, and that was about a year ago, give or take, um, somewhere right around a year ago when those boards came down, so they those guys reached out to the contractor. Um, let him know it came down, he said he'd come fix it, has not. Um, they've continued to reach out to him, continue to reach out to him. He, he's made one or two appearances over there, but it's been to make an appearance over there, show face. Um, the guys have donated a lot of their time cleaning up the mess on there, just to help clean up the area. Um, trying to get some of those boards up, I think, I believe finally, a couple of weeks ago, that he, the contractor may have came back for part of a day, put some boards together, but that was, that's been about it. Um, they've been unsuccessful, so I reached out to Mr. Malinkovich to see if maybe we could have some help, some added pressure from the county side to maybe influence this contractor to either show back up or, you know, file insurance claim. Um, see what we can do. I mean, I think we're close to this point. Big Piney did not have a hockey program last year because they didn't have a rink. Now it's, we're staring at staring at December, we're about to go into their second year without a hockey rink. There's kids that were, you know, sophomores in high school that may not, that, that may have been there last year to play. So we're just, I'm, I'm coming to you, wanting to ask if we can have some help, maybe get um, to go after this contractor to come do the right thing, either come get it back up, or if we can, I don't, I mean, really give the guys money, I mean, we're. I don't, I mean, really give the guys money. I mean, we're at the point where we want to just give them money and say, get a contractor, come in and fix this thing up right. I mean, one, it's a lot of money. Out of the rep board's budget to, but get these new used boards back in place. But. They're mostly backup, but we have to replace glass over there. Um. The glass is gonna be somewhere in that six and seven thousand dollars to replace that. Um, I believe some of those boards need. Anchored in, right? I, from what I understand, there's still gaps in the boards where if a. Um, skater goes into that, but they can fit a skate through the boards, let alone sticks and pucks and all that other stuff. There's a weak point that if. The guys say that if a. Somebody is hit into those boards, we might lose a whole section of wall in that area. So they, they said that. They may be able to get it up and have it suitable to skate on this winter, but that would be the extent of it. There would be no hockey right now. Um. We could potentially do plexiglass in the areas that were broke. Replacing, instead of putting glass in, put plexiglass in those broken areas. That would be somewhere around that two to three thousand dollar range to replace that, but there's still some concrete work that needs done. Um. Two more pieces of glass that we're still waiting to go in. Um, got vandalized in a recent football game over there, um, because it looks. I mean, they've never had vandalism ever, but because it kind of looks like a junkyard right now, I think that's probably what, not saying it's right, but what got kids to vandalize and break. You know, two more pieces of glass, which is about a thousand dollars for sheet of glass. Over there. Um. So I'm, I mean, I'm looking for either guidance or help from. The commission or from the county attorney on what we can do. Um, I mean, if we pay out of pocket or, you know, the rec board or county. Hands over the money to get another contractor in there to replace this. Then this contractor just gets to do a fork jaw, boards fall down, not come back, fix it and keep his money. I mean, that doesn't seem right either. So again, I'd like to see these rigs up and off of boards. Soon as possible. I mean, I'd really like to hopefully be, find a way to salvage a hockey season for Big Piney this year. Um, but.
So did we have a contract with that vendor?
There, there wasn't any formal contract in place besides, you know, he submitted a bid. These guys looked at it, said, okay, that looks good, move on.
Do you have a copy of that bid?
Yes, yes, I've, I've given all this to Mr. Milinkovic.
Okay. I'm sorry, please.
Go. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um. Is it just the terms, dollar amounts? Is there any, uh?
It was just laying out what work was gonna be done and the dollar amount.
Uh, descriptive, this. Descriptive as far as work or?
I think anything else. I, I shared a lot of screenshots and text messages between them. Um, stuff like that, but there wasn't any formal con- contract in place. I mean, and, and, I mean. I guess it would be their fault at the end of the day, but these guys are. I would say slightly barely paid. Volunteers, mostly volunteers are two guys that. Have full-time jobs and donate a lot of their own time, but their job is their maintenance guys that are over there to make sure that the rink is amboni, that the shade nets are on, that the door shut. That kind of thing. There you have a very basic job. It turned into, for them. Them volunteering as now project managers for trying to get this rink back up and going.
So, but you tossed in additional people be, when I was talking about the original vendor. Who you just described has nothing to do with that. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm confused.
Well, we have, we have a vendor that sold the parts and did the installation.
The. Big Piney Vipers Hockey, they, they bought the boards. They sourced used boards from. Minnesota, I think. I ca- I can't.
So we had the materials.
Yeah, and then, and then got a bid from a couple contractors. They, they went with one contractor. That contractor came in and said, I'll. Set, set it up. So he came in, he dismantled the old ring, put the new boards up, leaves. First windstorm, boards come back down. They discovered that. They weren't anchored to spec. I think they were, from what I understand, they were anchored to two inches. They were spec with six inches.
Clayton, is there any, uh, grows to go after that vendor that, uh, did the installation on this?
Talk about this in the executive session.
At this time?
Well, at some point in time, because you're essentially asking legal advice, if I can.
Can I take a motion to move into executive session so we can get this behind us? Um, this would fall under, I believe, Clayton. Uh, section sixteen, four dash four oh five A's. Uh, Roman numerate nine, otherwise confidential by law. Please. I'll take a motion. Second.
Yes, sir.
Please, if you would. If we need you, we'll call you back in.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's discuss this. How long would it take to put the sidewalls up on the rink and have that functional?
I, I don't know. I reached out to them just to see if they could get a contractor that would be one interested in what it would, how long it would take them, but.
Okay.
I mean. If, if we bring a contractor in and go do that, if, if it comes from the rep board, our hang up is, we don't meet again till January. So if we were to cut a check for them. The earliest they're gonna be able to start is gonna be second week of January.
Okay. The issue that we have is, um, I think two weeks ago, we, we had communication with, uh, Betty Cheney, is that correct? And said that the problem had been taken care of.
Uh. Two weeks ago, it was the day of the meeting or the night before the last commission meeting, the. Big Piney Vipers said that the contractor had shown up that, I think that Monday.
Sure.
He showed up, then they went back in behind him and said, oh, he showed up. That's what he did.
Sure. The issue that we face and have collectively agreed on is we come in at the last minute and say, here we need it. Um. One is not certainly fair to the commissioners and second is the, uh, youth that is suffering because of this. You know, we're willing to work with, but. To hold us hostage at the last minute, that's wrong, Monty, and you know that, and Roger, you know that, and I'm not blaming either of you. However. All we can do is say. Come up with the timeframe and the schedule and the cost to get the sidewalls up. And circle it with chain link fence without the glass, put the sidewalls down certain depths. Uh, hopefully we could come up with a bunch of volunteered work under appropriate supervision to do the labor. And go from there. Because otherwise, we're not going to sign a blank check to do the work and you can recognize why.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, my problem is, is we weren't apprised of this until. A month ago, a month and a half ago, something was.
Sure.
Along those lines. We've been exploring different avenues and that's when I reached out to Mr. Malinkovich and he said he needed to come in. And I wasn't able to make that meeting to give the backstory, which seems like watching it online, there was quite a bit of confusion about what happened there. The next meeting was in Big Piney, the Big Piney Viper.
Correct.
Um, guys were gonna come in, but they couldn't get away from their jobs to come in and.
Of course.
Just in the bureaucratic process of trying to. Sit down. It's not trying to surprise or hold anybody hostage. It's, we're just.
No, and that could have been poor terminology by me because I certainly wasn't accusing you of that. However, at the same time, I know how social media works, that board of commissioners aren't gonna do anything. And, and that's not the truth. All we can do is try, Roger, and you know that.
Yeah. Um, if you could delineate again what our plan would be now.
Need a cost repair. Uh, with the sidewalls, have those properly anchored, uh, with chain link rather than glass on top.
Roger, I'd like to, if the county steps in, um, and. And, and does it, I'd like this rink to more look like what Victor Idaho has or something, you know, so we get rid of the potential, um. Destruction of glass, everything else where it's not supervised. So there's lots of good rings that have boards and then they have chain link on the top. I don't know if you've seen them, Monty.
Mm-hmm.
But being an outdoor rink where it's not a supervised rink, I'd like to explore that option. You know, it's a lot less maintenance on it, a lot less that you have to worry about somebody vandalizing anything.
And I think the plexiglass option, which would bolt up to basically what they have would be replacement in those areas is a very affordable option.
It's affordable option, but as you and I both know, everybody goes down there to pocket knife and carves in whatever they want on it, and then that's.
Sure.
I mean, but the, and of course, it's gonna be something that you're gonna have to remove.
But the last plexiglass boards or glass that they had in place were the glasses came from Pineville's original outdoor rink and been spent the last. Twenty plus years down there.
But as you said earlier, that these was already vandalized once already. So it's like.
Well, it's stacked in the. Haphazard construction site. That's the problem. Lots stacked up there, but. We might, I, I don't know what was the discussion, but going forward, I mean, if the county does pay. Any money to fix this up, my question is, can we put some pressure on this contractor to?
So the problem is we didn't make the deal with the contractor. The, you know, basically the rep board. Build out the money from the county, county gave money to the rep board, rep board gave money to a third party. Who made a verbal agreement with the contractor. We, we can write a letter and we're gonna do that. We're gonna write a letter saying, hey. Us as county commissioners don't think this is right. I'm one of our citizens in our county, but. At the end of the day. What, what legal standing do you have? Um.
That's as far as.
To, to, you know, to fight that, right?
Yeah. I understand it.
And, and I, and now you're gonna know that, right?
And I provided a template for a contract form for those guys for any work going forward. As Mr. Milinkovic said, you know, have a contract in place that they could basically, if something doesn't get completed in this case, so this could give the power over to the county, make constructions, something like that. So I made a template and gave it to them. But, I mean, I'm no attorney myself, nor are they, so. How. A binding that may be, but it's as good as I can provide to them.
Something a lot better than what we currently have, right? It's a step in the right direction for sure.
Oh, the chain, the chain link works very well, you're saying?
Yeah, so the chain link works very well. So, or like Victor Idaho has, has one, it's an outdoor rink, no maintenance on it. Um. It's basically boards with wherever the glass would be, chain link pins on top of that, right?
I have a question. What, what kind of? What, what kind of, we're speaking heavy chain link, what? Cause I'm thinking, I've got a couple of roles. Of what might work. How much, how much are we talking lengthwise on each end, I assume?
Right, each side, all the way around it.
All the way around.
Three hundred feet? Uh, to think it's, I don't know that.
Yeah, but maybe for a dog or a, I don't think. It must have something to talk to. It's secure. Chain.
A frame, yeah.
Boys running, yeah, some, some. It's still like a fence kind of.
It's still like a fence on top of the court, right?
I mean, way up on top of the chain, like it has to have.
A support rail.
That's, that's. Have some, yes, important. At four foot, part of it, the body's gonna hit it. That's what I'm.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Uh, I, uh. Yes, kind of. I mean, I, I, I have to hear it a couple of times.
Yeah, so we're looking at all options. I mean, it plexiglass is what it is and it's very cheap and you guys, we got most of it. You bring that back to us. I, I just wanna know if the county's gonna step in and. Take over and build this, this ring, which for all options, both, you know, looking at thirty years down the road, what it looks like also.
Sure. The bottom line is, we're asking to do this without any, uh, guarantee that we'll be able to. Do the project for you.
Yeah.
But all we can do is ex- explore and see what doors open or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, like to do it for the, for the young adults there, that would be ideal and.
I mean, that's my concern is just to get a rink in place due to a contractor that.
Absolutely.
Whatever happened, but the kids are the ones being punished and here we are staring at the second winner without ice and I'm feeling panicked trying to. Do what I can to help these guys be able to.
We're in complete, complete agreement.
Would, would it be okay to seek another contractor?
Well, I, I've already tasked them with going out and get several bids. One, find who's, yeah, um, who's able to show up and do it and what it would cost. Um, just to get the boards fixed, concrete repaired, and then just a lot of little labor of fixing some damaged stuff. There's. The doors that, um, building that the Zamboni is parked in, the. Boards fell against that damage.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
Just chain link.
That caught a long time.
Donate about three hundred feet.
Give it a peak for nothing if you want. I would just be, you know, throw it away. I'll have to look and see what they're doing.
Okay. That's what we have. If you'd be kind enough to chase that, that would be great and, um.
Do we come back to you then or?
If you have information within a short period of time, send us an email and we'll get it disseminated. So we're informed at the next board meeting and. Um, rather than have to sort through at the next board meeting with new information. So if you can get that information to us sooner than later.
Yeah, as quick as they can get some.
Of course, yeah.
Contractors and.
Well, Roger doesn't do much. You can take care of that.
I hate to pull that off that last part. I'm better dressed than I am. Um. About the present contractor, is there anything? Any retaliation? I guess I shouldn't say retaliating.
The commissioners, the commissioners will put together a letter.
But, but that's about it. If he doesn't react to that, that's kind of.
Well, I didn't say that.
Oh, you didn't? Okay.
No, thank you.
Uh, don't worry. But you'll start with a letter. Is that correct?
We will start with the letter and move forward accordingly.
Okay, that's fair enough. Just so I know then. Leave it at that.
Yes.
Thank you.
No, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good to see you.
Baby.
Okay.
Never turned off.
Oh, monthly reports, um. Leila's back in. There must be something going on.
Yeah, we're about to hear a big request, I think.
Okay, Leila, please. And then if Emily has anything, uh, to add, she's up. Okay, just one bond for Emily. Okay.
The good news is I don't have any releases.
Yeah.
The bad news is we went from three vehicles to no vehicles in the last two weeks.
What are you talking about?
For fieldwork. So. We have a two thousand three Explorer. We have a two thousand seven Tahoe and our twenty two Explorer. So we got one in twenty twenty two because. The two thousand three was not sounding good, not, but it's been a trooper and gone for three more years.
Where is it? Where, where is it today?
So it broke down out on Horse Creek Road, road bridge, had to go get it. They looked at it. I, she said, and, or, uh. Her name, Alicia, asked if we wanted to do anything with it. She says it sounds rough. They got it started and I said, let's decommission it, being almost twenty three years old. We have our Tahoe. It used to be our good vehicle, so we thought we'll just use that. And I'll let you tell what happened to that.
Uh, so they, um, trailered that one to Whistler Chevrolet. It had recalls and. I'm gonna find out it needs a whole new transfer case and they don't know that the electrical will work even if they put one in. So right. So right, it doesn't have four wheel drive and it shifts bad um. Not roadworthy. Not roadworthy.
So that one's almost nineteen years old. It has a hundred and twelve thousand miles on it. So we're back back to our twenty two, which is more for town or travel for that kind of thing. It went in to have something done in Lander last week. They found more problems with it. Good news, that's under warranty. We're out of that one for two weeks. So we have no vehicle. Can't do our fieldwork, can't do our permits. We've been borrowing plenty and zoning is what we can. But.
Well, the quote Commissioner White is, was any of this in your budget?
It was not because I don't ever get a vehicle budget.
There we go. We know what's going on now, don't we?
For maintenance. Um, back in the day, I remember the twenty two vehicle we got, I was told. We're not putting money into our, used to have a new vehicle purchase budget was inactivated. That nothing was going in then in there anymore. If we needed a new vehicle, it would go to a different budget. Yeah, which I have not had money in that for. So. The last vehicle we got came out of something. I have no idea what carried to that. It, we never got. Vehicle money ever.
Thank you for that.
So I don't know what to do at this point. Basically, we need a vehicle, whether it's new or used, but we can't do our. I mean, the one. I don't want to take that out in the oil field. I don't want to take it out on really bad faraway roads. That's why we've always had two. Yeah, so I don't know. I'm just.
So the the.
Oh, the beach turned that suburban. They thought it was a bad, we want them a brand new, you know? Could you reach out to Billy and see if he could get that suburban going temporarily or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, we can. I mean, like we said, we're using this like like temporarily for next year or what?
No, I don't know. I know what these others, but I mean. There was nothing wrong with it and we bought a brand new one, okay? And transferred the one we had for Commissioner Shute. Got you know. We're the brand new one. Now we've got a black one. So the new one went out there to replace that because they had the money in the reserves to do that. So gets out of shot now.
Yeah, I know we asked them if there was something we could borrow and they said no. They had nothing for us.
But they just, they just went down. So they, I mean, I don't think they even took it in the, oh, you check. I'm, that's a short time, yeah, a short time.
We just need something with some clearance for.
Four wheel drive.
And four wheel drive.
Well, except for that, but I don't know.
So the. The the one in for warranty work is that four wheel drive also?
To take that out in the oil field and.
Because.
So.
Well, they did. They did take it up to Hobag Ranches two weeks ago and. If even in four wheel drive, it wasn't. With the clay uh has lower profile tires, it just isn't a.
Thanks for that. Thank you.
Always had one for how far.
So. What other vehicles are floating around? Does.
Yeah, I have no idea.
I would, yeah, ours, pardon me.
Take ours.
Don't take that.
The other day. The other day I was in town and I watched these kids on these. Battery powered scooters, they'd go like the devil. You could get by on two or three of them and just have one on your back. And if the battery run out of that, just go forward. I know that's not funny. Uh.
So. I don't know. Yeah. Big, and like I said multiple times, he doesn't have additional vehicles. But when I come through and and I'm not saying anything other than I frequently see. Uh, pickups parked over here in this lot. Next across the street. And. Down behind Country Lane. And I don't know if they're all being utilized at the same time if.
It's got eight or nine vehicles, but I think every one of them is about to shake your worst one against.
Okay.
I guess. Much left over there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's start with Billy, see what he has. Um.
So so how, so how often? I know you use them significantly at certain times of the year, but the rest of the time. Not that much.
That you're starting May through. We we're out to three days. Doing permits, progress and six year.
Normally just one vehicle though, is that what it requires?
Sometimes too, because we have the oil field too. We have to do our oil field reviews. So sometimes we have two groups going out at the same time.
What options should you bring with you, any?
I just wondered if we could either get something, buy something used or new or do something, but we can't get revenue. We don't have a vehicle.
Funny how that works, huh?
I don't. I don't mind checking with Billy on that suburban at all.
I think um. Just, just. Thank you. Just because um. Please chat with Billy and see what he has.
Even if he comes up at one, we still better make a plan to give a second.
Yeah, that's where I'm going. We have a second one over, but that's a town vehicle according. They um put together. And I'm not saying it'll be approved or anything, but for an option, we'll need to know um. What's a basic vehicle that you would need in addition going out and purchasing?
Are you thinking? Used, new?
There's no need to purchase new when you have such a huge depreciation at the uh. I go to uh one of the sites and. I've done very well on vehicles on a a site. Come in with a vehicle that's a year or two old with ten to twenty thousand miles and they last for. I think that makes sense, doesn't it? Definitely. So if you could come up with a couple of options in that regard, that gives us something to go on.
Peter from the visitor center just said, you know, said he was listening in and he said that he won't need suburban. Uh, the visitor center has um until probably next spring. So if someone needs to use it.
So let's take a look at that if we can. Peter, thank you so very much. Appreciate your time and effort on that. Uh, that's actually how it should work in the county, people looking out and helping each other. And then chat with Billy to take a look and see what that is. And we'll take a look and see what the vehicle over in Riverton's doing. And maybe by the end of this week, next week, we'll have filled the gaps and. And then also take a look at what's available online and we'll have as. Maybe by next meeting, several options to move forward with.
So your suggestion, I just to be sure before I tell Alicia to tell Whistler that we are not, we don't want to try to fix that one, correct?
I don't know which one you're talking about, I'm sorry.
Twelve thousand miles.
And that's where, oh, down Rock Springs. From what I heard, it was cost prohibitive.
Or it could be, and then the the cost may not be. Electronically of. Right, it's something that was a big. Big. Steak.
That we've driven them as long as we.
No, 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 which is fine. We just want, uh, if you go that direction. Is there? They just call it to a. Salvage yard? Is that how it works?
I think the. Put some in the auction. If I'm correct, they. Take the decommissioned vehicles and put them in the county.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
So 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 one other suggestion. Beans how I think we're going to make a budget transfer. Did you tell me? Yeah, s- s- yeah, so. I'm sitting right here where I can hear you good. So. I hadn't experienced shopping for a vehicle for my granddaughter. And found a real low mileage, low price vehicle right down near it. Why not? And I had a bunch of them to look at. And so. There might be an option there to just go peruse, if you would. We. Then that you guys could use at your discretion, not having to wait for somebody else to.
Sure.
Get by and it wouldn't be a huge expense. It it would it be another, it would be another option, I guess, is what I'm saying.
You're you're correct, Commissioner Vickery. So we. Looked, yes, please. We'll say that this has been addressed and bounce back to you with several options to review and you'll come back with us. I think that with Peter's gracious phone call or. Email, um, we have a short term solution at hand. Is that correct? And with Billy, maybe we have another one. I don't know. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Pleasure. Um, we had a. Bond. Where did that go?
For me.
Yeah. Make motion to approve charity bond for Jessica Rice.
Motion made all in favor. I. Opposed. Motion passed.
One bit of second of it. Okay.
I saw.
Okay.
Second.
Well, yeah, because I took it to a vote. Okay, Emily had nothing. Is that what I understood? Okay.
Great. Got me writing, trying to write my name and I couldn't remember how to spell it.
Please don't put that on public record. Okay, so. For upcoming meetings, could be meeting. Next time or. Two times from now, like to put on the agenda if everyone's in favor of um. Establishing a policy on when invoices become stale dated coming to us. Have that discussion moving forward and then um. Going to the Monte. And Roger scenario uh coming up with discussion pertaining to mandatory contracts with the uh expenditure of county funds. And we'll. Hold that in the future. At this point in time, I think that we want to uh the. Clayton, collect, correct me if I'm wrong, we want to move back into executive session.
Um, I would like to, let's cover the stuff that I have.
Okay, we're going to take a ten minute break.
Am I leading? Okay. So I have my one thing that's on the that's on the listed agenda. For active update, and I apologize, I didn't bring this up last meeting. They had asked me in response to the lease, they. Um, once we finalized, and this is my failure, I didn't bring this up last meeting because I forgot. Uh, they had asked if the county would include um snow removal in the lease as something that the the county would perform. Um. I believe that. Currently, as they had said, that um the. Uh, hospital district under this or the subletten or under the hospital district had been providing that service. To them at that uh to this point, they were asking if the county would continue to do that. Uh, and they wanted me to bring that up before they would uh sign the lease. They wanted me to ask that. Of you all.
I have no interest in providing snow removal. They're an independent business.
So that we either.
So that would that would fall on Andre's. Because Andre takes all the. Buildings. And I don't know if we have to do public health, even though we leased that building.
And I thought sublet, I thought the hospital was doing that.
Steve Clayton. I'm very. That offered. And then what is Aspen Grove? Is that, is that Andre still?
Is, no, I think this is. I think Aspen Grove, their whole deal with the exception of us having that thumb on the rental rates. They're supposed to take care of it all.
I'm just trying to. Remember.
And it might overlap, you know, Andre would be doing the. Probably the point is saying it's something we're asking about, you know? You know, where they share the same.
Yeah. Yeah, I know he does run his own point, right?
Chairman, would you let me try to get Andre on the phone to ask?
You're more, you're more than welcome to. Thank you.
That's some of the favor about it.
Yes, private business.
I don't think we need to hear from Andre. I think we just say, you know, the idea.
Good with that. I was just more curious at this point.
Which means, you know, and it's a good point, Sam. Absolutely.
I know the county does this normal before the public health. That's what I thought. So they're right on our street. So they are there.
But the city. So.
I think the the business owner is responsible for the sidewalk, right?
Yeah, same. City.
Okay. Um, I can make a note themselves, which are. See that. And then I would ask to move into an executive session, the driving litigation. Which is sixteen four dash four oh five, Roman at. Seven, I believe.
So before we went to, I'll bring something to. Change all this. So that land.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry, keep going. I have an additional thing. Go.
That uh. So there's two buildings sitting on that property. Do they belong to the uh? Hospital district? Did they go with the nursing home? What are those?
Believe those are storage for the hospital district. That's a conversation that I am I have with, there's a few different. Conversations I'm having with the hospital district and I don't. That's part of it. Um, and I don't know all the details on this.
It has to be stories for one. What the, and they should.
Yeah, and I and I'm trying to find, I'm trying to follow up and get more information and I'm sure that Lena is listening to this, yeah. Meeting and I will give her a call. There's a couple of things that she and I need to follow up on. So. That's pretty, I mean, yeah, yeah.
And any progress on the agreement, purchase agreement?
So with that, um. We're in the process, we need to. Move the. Property line. And that was the other thing that I was like, oh, yeah, 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 I gotta bring that up. Um, we need to do the property line. That needs to go through planning and zoning review for the town. Um, and it does include the need for a new uh new plot map to be drawn up. Uh, for that area. And I got a quote from Mike Jackson to do the engineering. The research, uh, I have an offer back from him on an updated cost. It may be less because there's the title commitment that already has the research in it. But I believe the number he sent me was forty seven hundred to do the um surveying and the planning for that. Um, and then. I will need to do the application with the town of Pineville and go through that process to get on there, planning and zoning and then get it moved. But I wanted to talk to you all first before I did the green, gave the green light to Mike to get the ball rolling. So then look. Well, either way, the. The county had discussed. Uh, moving that property line. So then it maximizes the the county's piece there.
Understand that, but I mean.
You don't have to.
We see why we would wait till we see if perhaps you people buy it, then it's appropriate to do it. We don't sell it. Just leave all the county property you get. It wouldn't be necessary.
In order to have a legal description or to have a contract to be able to. Um. Offer any piece of property or to get anything going on the piece of property, you would have to have the legal description for the property. And the legal description would have like, we have to. We can't save this portion of the property that doesn't actually exist in a plot. We actually would have to have it as a. Defined legally described. Piece of property for sale.
So how serious are they and how do they think they can get them?
Can we have that conversation? In our next executive session.
I know today.
Sure, that's what we were getting at is trying to identify. Okay, great. Um, so. Was that executive session sixteen? Was that executive session sixteen dash four dash four oh five A?
So litigation one and give me a second. I think it's seven. Just say litigation, it's fine.
Litigation, executive uh, session. Is there a motion? Second. Moving into executive session, please turn off all microphones.
Oh, there was nothing to. Oh, I thought you were already.
And regular session.
I think there was no action from the executive session, was there? Yeah, do old business or, or public comment?
I do have some. Sorry, I was asleep. Didn't remember that, but. Yeah, so as Janice reported earlier, we uh, attended that um, AI conference in uh, in Provo, Utah. Janice put it very well in her letter back to us about what went down, how it went. Um, got to spend a lot of time with uh, some IT professionals, both with the state of Utah and county governments. And a mixture of other states. What was nice about this conference, it was a smaller conference, so there wasn't a lot of us, so. We got a lot of uh, individual one-on-one time with everybody. One thing that it seems like uh, all counties and states are seeing is, is security, which as we know, we uh. We had some security issues earlier on. Um, one thing that came out of that conference that I thought was pretty interesting that we might want to consider. Is uh, doing a third party, third party audit on sublet county. IT security and wanted to throw that up to the board and see what your guys' thoughts were on that. Um, a lot of people have learned a lot of good things and as you guys know. Um, as we hear story after story of different counties. Even got to talk to one of the other counties that they've uh, they've dealt with attacks, security attacks on their stuff. Monthly, um. They thought it would be a good thing that we could try. Not that I'm aware of, though. Not since I've been here that I'm aware of. We do, Paul does that. Paul does an audit every year for us. Now, we good if we ask Janice to look into it and see what, see what our options are? The only other old business, like Janice said, we got the, the meetings coming up. Thank you for letting us uh, um, attend the legislative conference. Back in Washington again. Um, one of the things that uh, they did have was uh. Western Alliance is having their next meeting in Hawaii, right, Janice? That's where I'll leave that. And one thing that's important for, for me, and I think we should uh, all is what kind of warranty it still has on it. I think warranties are very valuable, especially with all the electronics in any vehicles now. So I think that that, you know, what's functional? And what, what kind of warranty it looks like. Remember him saying that. I remember him saying that, that forerunners is. And if a forerunner's, you know, if there's difference between five, ten grand between a good used and a, and a new forerunner with the thing, I would. Much rather look at that. Did you get some guidance? But if Doug and Mac wants to borrow, you might want to look at the goose neck option. Same as we've seen, I'm sure. Hi.